Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the planning board for Thursday, May 14th, 2015. We are recorded tonight, but not live. I'm going to walk you through our agenda for the evening, but before I do that, I'm going to ask everybody to introduce myself. My name is Emily Keys Ennis, I'm the chair.
My name's Alex Whiteside, and I'm a member.
Michael Kelly, a member.
Tim Swirwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Cheryl Togayes, a member.
So for the agenda for tonight, we do not have any past minutes to approve. Our next meeting dates will be May 28th, June 11th, and June 25th. We will be having a citizen speak. We have two items of new business, Two Adams Street, a permit extension discussion, and articles and the process for October 2015 town meeting. We also have two public hearings tonight, the site plan approval for 333 Brush Hill Road, this is a new application to the board, and we have a continued public hearing for special permit and site plan approval for Thayer Nursery. And I'll be going through the process we're going to take for each of these as those public hearings open. Under old business, we're going to have an update on our master plan and where we are with that, and then we're also scheduled for other business in case anything comes up, say an assistant town planner report, for example. So why don't we take on citizen speak at the moment? Now, if you are here for Two Adams Street, the 333 Brush Hill Road, and Thayer Nursery, I ask that you hold your comments for those, so that they'll be part, or at least for Brush Hill Road and Thayer Nursery, that they'll be part of the public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on anything else? All right, seeing none, let's move on to the first item of new business, which is a permit extension for Two Adams Street, and Mr. Horken, I believe you are presenting to us.
Yeah, thank you very much. Congratulations on your ascendancy to the throne, so to speak. And Cheryl, congratulations on joining as a new member. Bored to working with you, and bored to working with the board as it's newly constituted.
Great, well, welcome.
So, thank you. So, I was here in February with a brief discussion about the state of affairs at Two Adams Street, and I think I reported at that time that there was a negotiation underway between Extra Space as the owner of the property and a developer. In fact, Jack Dolly from Northland Residential, who's familiar to the board, was negotiating to purchase the rights to develop the building that was permitted by this board a number of years ago. We subsequently met with Joe Prondak, with some structural experts, to talk about how the building as designed, if modified, could achieve the merits of the new building code, the building code number eight, it was designed under building code number six. And the permit, and with respect to that, Joe agreed to extend the building permit to May 24th, which is the expiration date for the special permit that was granted by the board. The expiration date was continued by three, by four years, as a result of the passage of the Permit Extension Act by the legislature. So, they, both of those permits are now co-terminus. There has been some degree of discussion between Northland and Extra Space, they have not consummated an agreement, they're still ongoing. And I've spoken to both, to Joe Prondak and to planning staff, about the notion of a further extension, or at least a short-term extension of the special permit and the building permit, to allow that to complete. We know that we will have to come back with a more formal application to amend the special permit, we'll need a much longer date out in the future as to when the building permit, the special permit would expire. You know, it will take more than three months to build a new building of this type. So, we're really asking for an extension of three months, 90 days, from May 24th, to allow time to consummate that agreement. And then, we'll be back. If that, if there's an agreement to purchase, we'll be back, and we will be seeking either to simply extend that permit on a more formal basis, or we may be back for a new permit application with a modified design of the building. One of the, one of the things that the, that the new owner will have to do, get into doing, is determining whether redesign of the building under the newest building code may actually be a less expensive building to build, and therefore worth the cost of a new design as opposed to saving the existing design and building it onto that. I think the eighth building code allows stick built above a platform where this building as designed currently is all steel and concrete foundation, and so that cost savings may be sufficient to allow a redesign. And if that's the case, we'd be back, obviously, to re-permit that building because the building would not be, the building as the new building is not, would not have been permitted. So, with respect to that, I think the board has the authority to extend permits up to six months without application for hearing or notice of hearing, simply a presentation, but only for that short period of time, the law does allow that. And so, we will request simply a 90-day extension to allow us the time to either close on the negotiation and move forward, or something else happens.
So, the history of this is it was a two-stage project. One was, the first stage was the mill buildings, which had been rehabilitated, I believe are rented out at the moment, is that correct? And then, the second was going to be a new building, and we permitted it after long discussions just in time for the real estate crash, so it was never actually built. So, the question before us is, do we wish to extend it as requested for 90 days? Do we want to extend it for a shorter period? What do board members think?
90 days sounds fine to me.
Okay. Alex?
Sounds okay to me.
No objection.
Okay.
So, then I'll accept a motion to extend the permit for 90 days from May 24th, 2015.
No objection.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you very much, and if I could indulge the board for two minutes?
Yes.
I see that you have received your application packages for the special permit under the zoning for the Brush Hill Road, St. Pius redevelopment. I know that those were formally submitted today. One of the discussions, we've met with Tim and Bill Clark this morning, and we thought that it might be helpful for all of the members of the board to have a site walk, either before or sometime during the permit process. And I just thought to put out to the board whether you'd want to think about scheduling that. I think we were advertised for 6:45 on the 28th, would actually be the first hearing that night, or whether you'd want to have it before the continuation of the hearing on the 11th, and either do it 5:30 that same evening, or do it at another time, and we're wide open to that.
Okay.
We have scheduled a neighbor meeting and presentation for next Thursday in this room. Brian, you are one of the invitees as a Brush Hill Road resident, and all of those who have attended prior meetings, including director butters, are going to be, receive formal invitation, probably in tomorrow's mail, with respect to that. So, we'll have a full-blown presentation of what's in the, what's in the package, an opportunity for butters and residents to, to ask questions, to see whether or not their comments, earlier comments have been properly incorporated, but we think we follow pretty closely to what all of those meetings were intended to produce, and I think the package as submitted is very responsive to the zoning bylaws that was presented and approved.
Okay. We do have some other scheduling items to talk about later during this meeting, earlier, depending on where we are in the public hearing, so we'll take that and have Tim get back to you on, on dates that we can do.
Thank you.
So, great, thank you. Which brings me to the fact that you see some very large packages in front of you, and will be, you'll be needing to review those before our next meeting. It also allows me to start the introduction of, we're going to have some new processes related to special permit and site plan review applications, which is, we will be doing, the planning staff will be doing a technical review of the documents against the zoning prior to our public hearings. So, the first thing we'll do with each public hearing, I'll talk in a little bit more detail about it, will be to have a report after the applicant's presentation of the technical report, and whether things are missing or unclear, and that's to help us in our deliberations as we go forward. So, I'll talk a little bit about that when we get to the first instance of this new process at 6:45. Now, we have a couple of minutes, so why don't I just introduce the other new business item, which is articles in the process for October 2015, and then we can skip off that at 6:45 and move on to the next item. So, if you remember, in our meetings prior to town meeting, we talked about zoning articles we might want to take to the October 2015 town meeting, and what we might actually want to consider for the following year. We came up with a list of articles that are under consideration, and we talked about an initial process to get us from here to there. So, I wrote this up, and we'll get it to Tim for distribution, but what I have so far is Bill and Tim are going to be bringing the new zoning map forward. I've got B&amp;Bs, sign-by-law, lighting, and institutional review, and Alex has been helpful in pointing out some elements within our current zoning that may be applicable. Alex has condominiums and great estates for the condominium, non-conforming dimensions of residential buildings, and noise and nuisance. Mike, you are just watching over all of us at the moment. I don't think you've got a specific one at the moment, but you may get pulled into one or more as we go forward. Brian has condominiums near transit and with proximity to businesses, non-conforming businesses in residential districts, and because you chaired the Granite Avenue Committee, you're looking at Granite Avenue, that's almost certainly in October 2016, but let's at least think about that. Cheryl, I've got you down for accessory dwelling units and inclusionary zoning. So, for the next meeting, May 28th, I'm hoping that we can all start our initial research and have a, just a quick conversation about where we are as you're doing your research. I want you to think about the public input that's going to meet, be needed for our first meeting in June. So, that's going to be a public workshop. I know we're going to be doing a visual preference survey, because we're going to need it for signs and for, probably for the condominiums, and a visual preference survey is, for example, for signs, showing up different types of signs and getting a sense of what the community likes and doesn't like. So, be thinking about what you would need that we could do, maybe it's just comment boards, maybe it's an educational presentation. June 11th, so May 28th and June 11th, we'll talk about that. One of the things we need to do tonight is set a date for that. June 25th, we'll go through results, and July, we'll be presenting draft zoning with a comment period after that, a public comment period. August, we'll present the revised draft zoning. Our zoning is also due in August to the warrant committee and the Board of Selectmen, so I'm going to talk to them about deadlines. We'll have a second public comment period leading to our public hearing in September on the actual articles that are in the warrant, and then the October town meeting is October 26th, as far as I can tell from the calendar. So, that's where we're headed. It looks like we are right at 6:45, and Bill just walked out of the room, so.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Have you had any input yet from either party, or have you not had the discussions about extensions of deadlines?
Because town meeting just finished on Monday, I haven't had the extensions. They know I'm coming to ask, but I need to schedule those meetings, so that's my next step, so that when we come back, May 28th, I'll have a better idea of what our deadlines in the summer are. So, I think by the end of this meeting, I'd like to get the, the June public workshop firmed up as far as a date that we can agree on, and then Tim and I can find out where we're going to hold that. There's a couple of different places. Fuller's been, was great throughout the master plan process, Cunningham Hall, I think would be two good places, they've got the tables where we could break out if we need to. So, that's where we're going with that. You've all got your homework to start looking at. So, so let me kick off, are the applicants aren't here yet for 333 Brush Hill? I don't see them. So, in that case, that's going to be difficult to move on to. Yeah. We'll give them maybe five minutes, and then we'll have to move on. Tim, do you want to talk, other than what you did for today's public hearings, which we'll address later, do you want to talk about what else you've been working on?
I had my first town meeting last week, which was fun. Very interesting, former government. I've also been, I've been, I've been doing actually a lot of, we'll, we'll see what I've been working on for the past about week and a half. I've also been working on, I'm the staff support person on the animal shelter advisory committee, so we just had our first meeting on Monday, and that, that group is fired up and ready to go with weekly meetings for the next month to get a site chosen and get a design for the animal shelter. I'm also working with the Affordable Housing Trust, we have another meeting on Monday. One of the things they're interested in is looking through the master plan, seeing the various affordable housing-related goals in the master plan, and figuring out what role they can play in those. So, fortunately, I sit at this table, I sit at that table, so I'll be able to hopefully connect these groups. I'm also doing some work with the South Shore Home Consortium. This is the consortium of Milton, Randolph, Waymouth, Braintree, and Quincy, for the purpose of distributing federal home funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. They're putting together a consolidated plan to figure out what the various housing needs in the consortium are, so, and we got a meeting next week about that. I also am running our home rehab program, which is basically what the town of Milton does with that home money. It's used to help people, this is the first year we're doing it, it's used to help people with a zero-interest loan to do needed rehabilitation on their homes. The sad thing is, is that we don't have enough money to help more than a few people a year have actually gotten, just purely through word of mouth, several applicants that are interested in the program. So, it's a way, it's not enough money to do actual affordable housing development, but it's a way to help people stay in their homes, you know, through doing rehabilitation. That's all I've got for now. We just went on a site walk today, it was very exciting, the animal shelter site, it was great.
Excellent. Any questions for Tim? Oh, actually, Tim, master plan update, might, might as well tick that off the agenda while we're here. So, we were hoping to bring it to May 28th for a vote, are we going to be able to make that, or?
We will be able to make it. The master plan, I, I've been working with the consultant with just some readability, copy-edited issues. I'm going to be making those corrections next week, so a super-clean, super-fresh copy of the master plan will be ready. Hopefully, by midweek, if not the end of the week, and we'll distribute that to the board.
Great.
And put that online as soon as it's ready. It's not dramatically different from what is already up there, so I believe you all have a copy of it, so you should definitely be checking that out and then, yeah.
Okay, ready to go. Yes?
I made a number of substantive comments on the master plan, and I would like to know how they've been addressed, if they've been addressed.
Some of them have been addressed, and I have asked him to provide us a red line, so we can see what the changes are from one to the other. So, I do not remember off the top of my head which have and which have not been addressed, so, but we should see that going forward. Great.
But you could, you could, I mean, it would be presumably easy just to say what numbers have been addressed and which ones haven't been.
Yeah, that would also work.
Yeah.
So, we'll look at that, and make sure that gets done. Bill, we were supposed to start a public hearing at 6:45.
Good.
Where are the people for the public hearing?
It's a really good question. I have no idea.
Okay.
And I'll give you the update as to where they are, because there are some things that are going to be required of them that I can't answer.
Okay, so before you do that, let me, shall we open the public hearing so that it is open and your comments can be part of it, and then, in which case, I want to talk a little bit about our new process.
Good.
So, and then I'm going to recognize you. Okay, so, at 6:45, it's actually now 9:2. We are opening a site plan approval under Section 8D of the town zoning bylaws for 333 Brushwood. We've got the application and site plans, I believe you all received stormwater, a stormwater report. So, what we were going to do, and hopefully still will do, is the new process that we'll be doing for all site plan approvals and special permit applications that come in front of us, we're going to have a presentation from the applicant. I'll then recognize a member of the planning staff, for this one, Bill Clark, to report on the staff's technical review of the application. We'll then take questions from board members on the application and the technical review to make sure that those are all entered into the record. We'll then take testimony from members of the public, identify the outstanding items for the next meeting. In this case, we already know that this meeting will be continued to May 28th, so we'll have a cutoff time to, so that we can move on to our next one, since we have two public hearings tonight. When we get to the public testimony portion, I have reminders for people about how public testimony will be given, and I'm hoping to wrap this up because we've got the public hearing at 7:15, so we're going to wrap this one up as close as possible and move it on to May 28th. So, Bill, with that, since we don't have the applicant to present yet, why don't you go ahead and give us the technical review?
The applicant delivered their first set of plans on April 23rd. From that, I did a review, found that they were deficient in several ways, and they have since submitted new plans. You have the new plan. I did give Mr. Kelly the stormwater, stormwater calculations. I did not yet meet with the town engineer on the stormwater calculations or the stormwater itself. When this board issued its special permit to expand the project, there were a couple of items in the special permit, one of which was drainage shall not exacerbate or cause drainage problems on budding lots insofar as reasonably possible. Stormwater manage, management shall mitigate existing problems. I'm not sure that we've achieved that yet, but I'll go through that with our engineering department. I have not yet heard from them, because they've had, between town meeting, a little bit of cleanup work from what they, what they messed up with the winter, we just haven't been able to get to that step. There's some other issues here. There should be no clear cutting of lots, unnecessary destruction of trees, I know there's some trees here. It does seem that most of the trees that they'll be taking down are coming down because of the stormwater systems that they're putting in. It also appears to me to be doing some pretty good earth moving, which is what I would much prefer to have our engineering staff looking at how that's going to not exacerbate the situation. And this is the site plan approval. I know that they gave us a new set of documents for the, for the impacts, for the runoff, for the erosion control, the sewage, subsurface conditions, the town services, the human environment, and the general impact, which you have.
It's attached to the application?
Yep, attached to the application. Whether it answers the questions, that's a different question, but are they there? Yes. If I cannot get the engineering department to move expeditiously on that stormwater system, I would like to be able to request that we bring it to the peer review person that we've been using the last few times, Lisa Eggleston.
Mm-hmm.
She can get it done really quickly, she works really well with the DPW engineering staff.
And that's paid for by the applicant, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And other than that, everything that is in the checklist for site plan approval, they have provided.
Okay. So, we're really looking, we've got a complete application, in your opinion, but we are looking for additional information to supplement what we've received.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do board members have any questions on what they've reviewed so far? Mike, I know, I don't know if you've had a chance to review the stormwater, so if you have, maybe you want to kick that off.
I wanted to see if they were going to put any type of curb on the roadway, so that it would funnel the water to the new catch bases that put in, because the whole, I was, I was amazed when they said they dug a hole eight feet deep and didn't hit groundwater, but then when I went to the plan and looked at the plog, it's, it's quite a hill. So, I, that becomes, that becomes more believable, but the way it runs down the hill so drastically, it'd be nice to see some kind of asphalt berm or curb to funnel that roadway. They also don't understand from the plans what structure they're putting at the back corners of the driveway.
Tim, don't close that all the way, it must remain open.
What type of structure they're putting at the back corner of each driveway to catch the runoff down the driveway? It says mini catch basin, but in the plans, they detail a shallow drywall, if you will, but I don't know if they use it a typical catch basin or just less, or shallow asphalt.
They're talking about K-Cott berm on the driveways.
They should add some bit of berm in there, too. Do you turn to the details?
They're, they're calling the whole, they're calling that a drive, the same.
Oh, okay. Good. That answers that question.
It was an easy one. Thanks for coming, Bill.
I don't deserve it, I did.
I kept looking at it going, you know, are there basements? And the original answer back from the engineer was, no. Well, you go through the plans, and yeah, there's a basement. And you start looking at the elevations, here, building, they're building that house on slab, and then building up and filling around it.
I think that's a pretty serious garage underneath, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, the first was, in the first house, 91, the slab is down to 82. And you have a catch basin. Everything around it, the garage is on the back, but how you can do that? Everybody is collecting the water. So, I mean, needs a question for the engineer, but.
Well, they, what they tell us is the, the ground there's got a lot of clay, and they're saying it's not very permeable, so the ground, the problem you have is the groundwater, just traveling.
Correct, so you need to catch it in these proposals, but that's what they're going to tell us that it can.
That's, that's why I was asking about this mini catch basin in the wall in the back corner, that's why they, they have a detail for a catch basin, and they have a detail for what they call a pre-catch drywall. I'm going to figure out what they had put in the back corner of the driveway.
You're asking a lot of questions.
No, no, I just.
But I think it's important that we identify the questions that are going to go to the applicant, so that when they do appear in front of us, they're ready.
That, your, your point about the K-Cott berm on the driveway, and the roadway being the driveway, that would lead to the next question that maybe they answer too, because you're more observant than I am, is are they putting a berm on the driveway for the house, if you will? I mean, that's, that's where they, that's where they're creating impermeable ground and more severe runoff with the new roadway, I'm calling it a roadway, and the new driveways. Then they talked about putting boom and seeding over what exists there today, so actually the ground that they're done with might be more permeable than what exists there today, which may help.
You know, those have to be retaining wells on those driveways.
I think they are.
On the, where the, he's got the dock aligned there.
But they have called out, you know, the.
Right, they have to drive down, they're, down around the back.
Yeah, on the house to the far left, the L shape, yeah, to retain it.
Looking at.
This driveway's heading downhill there.
Three.
I hear it's 78.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, if you, if you have the K-Cott berm on the back, very back end of the driveway, I mean, otherwise it's just going to wash right down. He's got some kind of catch basin there, but I don't know if it's going to trap everything.
It's a huge slope in the back, coming back down towards the driveway, you get 94 in one, you get 84 at the driveway.
Yeah.
Steep slope coming up out of there, and you've got a little tiny, you know, mini catch basin, and I don't really care that you've got.
Maybe he needs a, maybe he needs a trench right across the whole back of the driveway.
I mean, the, the location of these residences down slope so far is, we found a lot more disturbed area, and people are really close to the property lines, and having that, getting your, creating more of the drainage issues, I think, by their siding.
People are in rivers, I mean, at the inversion level of 74 and a half, and the people below it are 72. it are 72 feet. Guess what they're getting?
Oh, so things are going to run downhill, that's...
That's what I mean. I mean, they're pushing it all to the back, yeah, but it's firing it in that direction.
It's, if you look at it, it's pushing the grade out, right? So like right now, you can see they're pushing great, the contours, 82 and 80 and 78 and 76, pushing it closer to the property line. So they're really, in a sense, creating a steeper slope close to the property line.
And, right.
So that's going closer to the neighbors, right?
Right. And they're telling you, we already have a problem.
Many, well, in reality, from the tennis court back, you had a downhill slope to start with. They're now catching a lot of that.
And that's a number, I guess, that they have to give us that they're taking out most of it in the front.
And like I said, they said they're going to, they're now going to boom and seed the whole area, and it should make it, they didn't give a depth, but it's going to make it more permeable, the ground, the water's going to percolate into the ground better. The existing soil, the same as, got a high level of clay.
But they're disturbing a lot more, the trees and roots are in the soil now, right?
It's over a foot there, though, of fill that they're putting on top, so that'll be the new lawn, it'll be at least a foot.
And then it'll hit the clay after the foot.
Flooding bog at that point.
So in thinking about what we've just brought up, are we satisfied with the project narrative that we've received that's attached to the application? Do we feel that that has fully addressed?
I'd like to see a site section picked up from the tennis courts down to the property line.
Site section, tennis courts, property line. Anything else we should be asking them for?
I have the statement of this rule.
It does seem to be a little light.
I missed something, all I got is the statement of the...
Oh, attached to the, this, it's a little two pager, well, page and a quarter.
What do you have there, Maria, what we're looking at?
That's a hard copy of the stormwater report. Everyone got an electronic copy?
Okay, so, yeah.
So the narrative is...
They're going to have to pump the sewer, just up though. Do they have backup power?
They didn't say that.
Is the peer review going to appear before us so that we can question her?
Yes. If it's, I'm guessing that if it's Lisa, we'll get her to do that. If it winds up being John, I'm not sure, you can, I can ask him to.
That would be helpful. I think we should have one or the other in front of us to answer questions from the town's perspective.
Yes, there's an emergency generator in each home, Mike, according to the statement of the...
They're all the same?
I guess they are.
I assume so, since they gave us a representative plan and elevation.
The storm, structures they use are the latest, greatest, the storm tech and the Caltech system.
Okay.
Within the storm tech system over the airport.
That's good to know. All right, so peer review or DPW review of the stormwater calculations, questions on curbs, on fill, on placement of the driveways and the properties and how close they are to the line, site section from the tennis courts to the property line, additional information on the site narrative, because it feels a little light, given the extent of the, this whole process. Anything else that we're missing? Take back to them.
The road cross section, the cross, I'll follow the road.
Road or driveway.
Do we know in fact what bill they're bringing in?
I don't think we do.
Where they're changing the grade? I mean, it sort of shows where they're going to change it. How much bill is this going to apply? Because there is a bill by law, and it probably is flexible here, and they probably have to go to the board to deal with all this, all this filling.
I was wondering when Bill said earlier that there is a significant amount of fill. Sorry, we ran into that in a couple of other projects. All right.
If that's the case, you know, I mean, it's not going to be our, our deal.
Right. They have, we tell them that they have to go to the ZBA to get permission for...
Tim, if we could get two site sections, here and here, and in those site sections, if they could indicate the existing grade and then the proposed grade, and then shade in the area which is still, we'll have a graphic also to go along with the calculation.
They're, like, when you pointed out about the retaining walls, it looks like they're raising the front lawn, which probably give you somewhat of a graded, level front lawn. But in reality, as they're going back, they're not, they're really not changing the grades that much. It's 80 there, there's existing 80. It's 82 there, existing 80. 78, existing, 78, new. It's not changing drastically.
Cheryl, if you can show Tim after the meeting exactly where you want the site sections, Tim and Bill, and then that way they can park it up and make sure they know.
I mean, there is quite a steep drop.
I mean, it's steep to start with. I mean, if you look at the existing, look at the existing, oh, right here.
But here you go, 84, 82, 80, and it's, I mean, it's raised. They pushed it out.
Yeah, they've raised the front of the, front of the houses.
It's just that they pushed it out and raised it and put it very close to the property line, because in, and so I, that's why I'd like to see the section, just to under, so that we can see a graphic. And it might be we want them in all three because the conditions are different, really, a little bit different in all three. Like, this proximity of this property coming in and the proximity of that disturbed line?
Yep.
Now, where are the trees there? Where the trees might be impacted. You know, root canopies of trees would go beyond...
92, 90, 90, new.
Essentially into that area.
88, new. 86, existing, 86, new.
I'm looking right in here.
Okay. At that, at that point, they...
At that point, they do push it out.
They raise it up two feet.
Okay. So we need to know exactly what the changes are and what the quantity of fill is, and then find out if that fill...
Do a cubic area calculation.
Yeah, exactly. And does that fill trigger the ZBA? Okay, so this is a public hearing, and we've got about five minutes left.
I have other issues.
All right. I need to ask for people to comment, though, so what are your other issues, Alex?
The elevation, someone said this was a representative elevation, and that's not good enough.
Well, what I meant was, there was one elevation, but there's three houses, so I think your question was, is that the elevation for all three houses?
Is it?
I think we should, we should ask that, yes.
I think we should find out. I would like to, do we have on this plan where the neighboring residences are, so that we know how close to the existing houses the proposed houses are? Because if we don't, we should.
Yep.
And next time, Bill, we probably, I don't know if we, we, the others are here tonight to be heard, but if they are, we should hear them. But if they're not, we should make sure that next time around, they are aware that we're having a hearing.
So unless there are other questions from the board?
Yeah, I think, just on Alex's point on the elevations, I mean, the, if the garage is below, then there's a grade line, doesn't have anything to do with what's proposed.
Okay.
It's just something diagrammatic. I'd like to see the grade line on the elevations be accurate.
Okay. All right, and then we need to know...
Can I ask which one you're talking about? Say that again.
So on the building elevations?
Which sheet is it, A2?
A2, the last sheet. We understand the sheet three, the way this photography is looking, the garage is at an elevation 83, and the first floor is at 92, but the grade is not up at the first, close to first floor level. If you're, so whatever you're, I guess you'd be following, the front elevation was facing the drive, right? So presumably, the rear elevation and then the right side elevation would be where we see the garage, right? But we don't see any garage in this right elevation. And it's different for each house because they're at different elevations.
So they really need to give us the elevations for each of the houses.
See what I'm saying?
Yep. Where's the garage door? I understand what you're saying, that the rest of it, I think he answered it, but the garage, you're right, there's no garage.
There's no garage, depicted.
I can, I can make these things work for everything but the garage side.
They can make these work, but I think it's, behooves us to see what it really would be like, because it's not going to be like this, right?
Correct.
You know, which they could do a plan showing what they've proposed to do.
All right, let's see if there's anybody here who wishes to speak. Let me run through the process for speaking, so if you are wanting to speak on this hearing, please wait to be recognized before speaking. Come to the table and give your name and address, and speak into the microphone. When you're done, please leave the table. All comments and questions must be directed to the chair, and then I'll direct it back outwards. And speakers may not cross-examine applicant, board members, or other speakers, because you're directing the questions here. So, does anybody wish to speak on the site plan approval for 333 Brushwood? All right, seeing none? Yes, well, okay, I'm just going to bring it up. Bill and Tim, are you satisfied that you understand what the board wants? Do you have that list? Okay. And then Brian?
Just a quick question. Do we, did you receive the green cards on the notice to the neighbors to answer this question? They weren't regular mail.
Regular mail.
Okay. So what are we going to do for the next hearing?
Do it again, and I actually know two of the neighbors that were vocal at the last hearing. I'll make sure that this poslo is here.
I was going to say, make sure the applicant comes as well. Make sure the applicant comes.
Yes, yes, yes.
But typically, we would send it out certified?
Called so many times before, I don't know why he's not going to now, but...
Typically, we do send it out certified, is that correct?
Do we typically send it certified or not?
All right. So it is about, actually, it is 7:15, according to that clock, which is the one we're going to go by.
We'll vote to continue that.
Oh, yes, thank you very much, Alex, for the reminder. So we're going to move to continue this to May 28th. Do we have a time? We have the, we have one at 6:45, we have the Woodmere side at 6:45, right?
If it's St. Pius at 6:45, you've got there, and then this, this should be it.
So 7:30?
Fine.
Okay. So move to continue this to May 28th at 7:30?
Move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, excellent. Let me just note that. Okay, great. So the next item on our agenda is a continued special permit under Section 3 in and site plan approval under Section 8D of the town's zoning bylaws. This is a special permit application that is already in process, but we are changing the procedure a little bit. I'm going to recognize Tim to introduce a matrix that he's been working on to bring all the different pieces of information together. We're going to have an update from, a brief update from the applicant on anything that's changed since the last meeting. Then the board will be going through, starting with item four, Plans, Rules and Specifications, Paragraph F Operations, which is on page seven of the application, the white binder. We're going to be working our way through that, and we may be asking questions of the applicant during that, but mostly this is an attempt for the board to understand what has been presented to us. We're going to wrap that up at a certain point, probably about an hour, hour and a half of discussion, and at that point, I'm going to recognize members of the public who wish to speak on what we've discussed so far. I understand, Mr. Joe Henning, you have a letter that you would like to read to the board, so I'm going to recognize you first when we get to the public testimony. I'll do the same reminder about public testimony I did earlier for the site plan approval. We will then identify any outstanding items for the next meeting. We know we're going to continue to May 28th. Depending on how far the board gets tonight, it is my hope that we are able to close the public hearing on May 28th and proceed to board deliberations. We'll know that a little bit better. And a probable vote, again, if we can move to closing that public hearing on May 28th, a probable vote on June 11th. So let us get started. First, Tim, do you want to walk us through this matrix?
So I, I put together this, this matrix that hopefully can systematize the discussion a little bit, and let me, let me jump in after this. I have one for you.
Hold off, Ned, until after.
I just wanted to...
Oh, okay, great, yeah. Just making sure.
It basically, that first column will, will outline, this is language directly, or very, very lightly edited from the actual bylaw, kind of broken up into sort of individual items. The next column is the applicant's proposal to address that part of the bylaw. This language is taken directly from the application that we have from Thayer Nursery, the April 5th revision. There's a column that references where in the application you can find that information. There's a column labeled compliance, which is basically either planning staff or the board's determination of whether the application is compliant with that part of the zoning. If it is, it gets checked. If not, we will, you know, figure out what needs to be done to get that into compliance. There's a board proposal column, which is, I anticipate, going to be the sort of the skeleton of whatever is going to go into a special permit, whatever the board proposes to do to create an enforceable measure, to put into a special permit to address whatever section of the bylaw we're talking about. There's a timeline column, which is basically to figure out a timeline for achieving the board proposal, whatever intervention the board suggests. The final two columns, a butter proposal column is drawn from a memo that a group of butters sent to the planning board, I believe, it was towards the end of April. So that language is pulled directly from there. It doesn't address every single item, but the items that it does address are in there. And then the final column is labeled building commissioner memo. The building commissioner for the town of Milton, Joe Prodeck, testified before the board in February and then summarized his testimony in a memo. So anything that that memo addresses is in there. So it's really meant to be a kind of single thing that you can look at and sort of see who's been chiming in and really line up the application with the bylaw. It's a draft.
Yes.
It's a tool. I don't think anything that's on here necessarily will carry any legal water until it's written, so it's just something to help the process.
It's an organizing principle. I should say, it's not complete. Tim's continuing to work on this and to go through the meeting minutes that we've had previously to make sure that all the information's incorporated in here, but we wanted to make sure that everybody got a chance to look at it today, see where the planning staff and the board were trying to go as far as organizing this information, and then use it as a tool tonight to organize some thoughts, but it will be more complete for the May 28th hearing to, as I said, hopefully finish that up. So let's turn to...
It'll have page numbers next time.
Yes, I was going to say, I didn't want to call that out on you, Tim, but, yeah. So let's turn to page seven of the application, so we know where we're starting. And this again is Paragraph F Operations. We effectively finished up discussion of the previous paragraph, which was on landscape. I think we'll probably circle back around to that, because I believe there's some new information on fences coming through, but I'd like to move us forward as much as possible, understanding that in both the public hearing next, at our next meeting, and in our deliberations, we can always circle back to that. So Ned Corcoran, would you come forward, if you like, if you have any sort of brief update for us on where you are, and then the board's going to start its discussion of these sections?
Ned, I have Maggie and Josh to join me. Oh, I knew that. The director, Corcoran, attorney, representing Maggie and Josh Oldfield and Thayer Nursery. I was not present at the last hearing. I was away on vacation, and I know that the board moved forward, there's a lot of progress, and I appreciate that. There's a lot of progress, and I appreciate that. What I, a couple of things that, as I understand, let's see, the discussion around the fencing, I think we're taking that under advisement and still considering that. We do think that 10-foot chain link fence is not appropriate for the location. We're concerned that sound attenuation, that far removed from what we think is really the center of activity, may or may not be particularly effective. And so, what we, we'd like to propose a, what we have proposed, which is a cedar fence, essentially at the 30-foot mark along the, what's along, like, parallel to the row, Johanning property line, stepping back to the Tevens property line, would propose an eight-foot fence, parallel at 15 feet, so continue that fence along. Remain with the eight-foot fence on the one-foot berm on the Lepore property line, that is the, we think that sound attenuation area would be effective, because it's immediately proximal to the area of activity that's being requested for the landcare yard, and it would be effective, because it's tall enough at that location to capture and block much of the, of the noise. We think that the, the fence along the row and Johanning and Tevens lines is much further removed from where that activity will be. It's on the other side of the barn, and so we don't know to what extent that that sound attenuation would block, but we understand that the board concerns about that, and so...
Brian, you have a question?
Yeah, could you just summarize it, just going in front of each property?
Yeah, so in front of, what we propose, in front of Lepore's property, would be the fence as proposed, eight-feet cedar fence on a one-foot berm with sound attenuation. And I think a month ago, we agreed to extend that fence further beyond the barn, farther, further towards the Tevens corner of the property than where it previously shown on the plan. To cap sort of, and I can't remember the, the distances, but we...
I think we've got it marked on one of the plans during that particular discussion.
On the row and Johanning and Tevens, we would say that the fence as currently proposed, 10 feet without sound attenuation, at 30, 30 feet parallel to the row and Johanning property line would remain. Then a new fence, 15 feet, sort of jogging back at the perpendicular to the, to the, like this, towards the boundary line of row and Johanning and Tevens property, coming, stepping back to 15 feet and running parallel to row, to the Tevens property.
And that's eight or 10 feet?
And that would be, I think we'd propose eight feet. I think at that point, the ground is up.
And no sound attenuation or any...
No sound attenuation.
Okay, thank you.
One of the, one of the items that I know that is, that is still outstanding, and it's kind of bound up in litigation that is pending between the parties, is the completion of a drainage analysis at the area approximate to the row and Johanning property. There is a nuisance claim that has been filed and is subject to litigation, and I understand that the parties are negotiating a time and conditions under which engineers for both parties would come out, look at the trench, try to determine what it is that's there, what might be happening as a result, and what solution should be designed. We have a, a design in mind, but we haven't advanced that forward, because we want to make sure that the engineers have had that chance to meet. We don't have a date. I'm hopeful that will happen in the next couple of weeks, but we owe the board a, well, we owe the board a new, a new plan that will be final based on what comes from the board, but one of the things that we owe is the topographical information about that swale, because that drainage, that trench was dug post-preparation of the existing conditions plan, and it's, that's, well, that trench is not shown on a plan. And so we do owe you that, and we owe you an analysis at some point about how and whether there's a need to tie that to the drain that's being proposed to tie in at, in front of Hillside Street, but that's, that would be coming.
Okay, so then that may change the timing of both the closing of the public hearing and the moving to any sort of vote. So you should keep the planning office updated as to the timeline on that, because obviously, that has to be part of that. And I would say, too, with any proposals where the board has discussed something and, you know, decided based on our conversation and input from both you and your client and the butters, if there is a counterproposal that should be presented us to, to us in writing.
Okay.
Not in the format of the application, but as a separate memorandum, so that we can keep track of those and not have continual...
Understood. And so it'll be written in response to the request.
Yes.
So I, I don't know whether the board, the extent of the, the board, I know there was discussion about the nature of the fence, chain link, height, sound attenuation. I don't know that, it's not clear to me that there was a decision made, that there was this, but there was discussion, so I don't know, and I apologize to the board, if the board feels like it's made a decision, or whether you're waiting for, for something in, in response with respect to that.
One question I have on that.
Yes.
Is, it sounds like the fence is not going to be continuous again, that the proposal's not to have the fence, the two fences meet in the corner. Is that correct?
That's...
No, they'll, they'll meet.
Oh, yeah, so you...
They are connecting, so...
Are they connecting?
Because I think that was where, I think that's where we ended up. So that's my question is...
Down the, the Lepore property line?
So meeting at the back at the corner of Tevens and Lepore?
Correct.
I don't know where that, I don't know where we netted on that.
Okay, so then that will be part of the, the counterproposal when you say...
Have you seen the letter, the most recent letter from the neighbors? I saw that.
That would also be helpful to address at some point, not now, because you've seen it, but we would expect some, so because the butters have requested certain mitigation, we would expect a response to that. It would be nice if there was some agreement, and we could have moved forward on that, but we will hold that. Anything else to update us on, Ned?
I think not at this time, until the board has a chance to.
All right. So then we're going to start at the bottom of Page 7 with Operations. In the application, the Thayer Nursery had proposed some hours of operation for the landscape business use. I'd like to actually hold on that a little bit, only because one of the questions that came up is whether or not they should be allowed to start that hour earlier. So if you remember, the zoning requires certain hours, but says that the planning board can allow them to start an hour earlier if it has been deemed that it is necessary for the operation of the business. I've asked Tim to pull the special permits of the other landscaping businesses, because at one point, in one of the pieces of material we received, the applicant had requests, had said that they wanted to start earlier because of the competition of the businesses in the area. So I've asked him to pull the special permits for Coulter, which we did, and also the ZBA special permits for Eagle Farm and the Two Thomases, because I want to see where those hours are. The other thing that I would suggest that the board think about in hours is, of course, there's already an existing business on the site, a nursery operation, that already has certain hours established by the ZBA. And one of the tricky things about looking at this special permit is ensuring that it is easy to tell what's being done when. So we may very well want to consider what the required hours of operation for the nursery are, to see if we also want to require the same hours for the landscape business, so that if we know a machine is running at X o'clock, it's supposed to be running at X o'clock, and we don't have to say, well, is that a nursery-related machine or a landscape-related machine? So I'm asking Tim to pull all of those hours together, and I'd like us to discuss that on, at our next meeting. However, the next part of Section F would be the location of drivers and unloading and loading areas on the property, and I think we should start to talk about that. We should also start to talk about the proposal for delivery directions that would be given to the, any trucks making deliveries, talk about how those would work. Backup alarms are part of this section, and that's come up before, and we have had a request from the butters, I believe, to consider deliveries to the other site, especially of Mulch, to consider that Mulch should be delivered to that site and picked up at that site, and I think we should talk about that as well. So, do any members have any questions on this? We've talked about some of this before in different places, but I think this is a time where we really need to address it and come to a decision on how we want to deal with that, and if we want to make changes or not. Yes, Alex?
I have many questions, many questions.
Please.
But it seems to me, no, I, I, well, for one thing, going, going beyond the hours of operation, I want, if all these landscaping trucks are going to be lined up in the morning, getting ready to go, I want to know where they're going to be, I want to know when they're going to start.
Yeah.
I want to know if they can be loaded the night before. I want to know the route they're going to take, and I want to know the same thing for deliveries.
Okay.
I want to, I want to know where the delivery trucks are going to stop and how they're going to unload them, when they're going to be there.
So...
And I want to, and these trucks, I don't want them off Forest Street.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want, I, this Hartpak area, saying that we'll expand Forest Street to accommodate our trucks, I don't think it's right in front of this house. I mean, it just brings the trucks even closer to a house that's being sold currently, and I wouldn't be surprised if the trucks were not part of the problem. I don't know, but...
Okay.
I got a lot of questions. It seems to me that just saying, do you have questions, and then, and then, and then not have, I mean, let's start with one thing and then go on to the next thing, but not say, does anyone have any questions? Because I have a lot of questions, and I don't want to be foreclosed.
You're not going to be foreclosed. Far be it for me to foreclose anybody. So on the route, before I ask the applicant this, because I think the, the unloading, the loading, and the route is a good beginning question, do you mean the route within the property, or the route that the delivery trucks take getting into and out of the property? Or do you mean both?
I think Route 28, the Hillside Street to Forest Street is about the only way you can do it, but I do...
But did you mean the movement with them?
I want those trucks to stay on Forest Street and not infringe on the people across the street. I mean, if there needs more turning, they should make that turning, they should push their stone wall back and make the turn on their side of Forest Street, not at the trucks encroach.
Okay. Other questions or comments on this particular item? On the turning radius? We'll, we'll get to you in a minute.
Can we...
On delivery.
Have you, have you done a template on it?
Yeah.
No, we, we have not. The proposal was to put Hartpak on there, because there is occasional rutting that happens. What they've done recently is put large boulders on there, and then, and the application signed with, with respect to that, we can, that's easy to do, is to keep those boulders there, but we're proposing to treat that area so that it wouldn't rut. I think that's actually part of the town's right-of-way, although it's, it's sort of a, it's, it's not part of the paved way, it's still part of the town's right-of-way. But we propose to, to just treat that, so that it would hold up for the occasion when the, when a truck, truck didn't make that turn properly, but I...
So is the intent for trucks coming down Forest, then, to make the right into the property?
No, no, nothing coming down or up Forest Street.
They're not allowed to, because Chikataba, there is no trucks. So delivery trucks don't come in.
Are going to come from Hillside?
Right.
And they're, and then they make the left onto Forest?
Swing, yeah.
Left onto Forest, left into the driveway.
And left into the driveway, okay.
Have you checked the turn, I mean, to Brian's point, can you check the turning radius of the trucks relative to that intersection?
Yes, we can, we can have Jim DeSalle do a template.
I think that would be helpful, because I think to Alex's point, it would be helpful to understand that if the movement isn't possible, it's probably better to not rely on the shoulder of the abutter. The other concern I would have is that if the template starts to get too tight, and you're putting boulders out there to defer away from that area, now you're starting to risk having trucks reversing and backing up and beeping, and, you know, we're into another whole problem, so it would be helpful to see a template.
Well, I also, I know in urban environments where there's tight street conditions, you can limit the size truck that's doing the deliveries. So if you find that a particular-sized truck has a difficulty with that radius, you can see about whether the deliveries can be made with a different-sized truck, right?
I think one of the, one of the issues is the, the bulk of the larger delivery trucks are trucks coming from interstate, and they, you know, as far away as Oregon and California, and they come across and they unload at different locations, so I think we can demonstrate that the, that the turning radius can, can be managed. I think the, the notion of a template analysis is, is good, it's easy to do, we'll have it done, and I'll submit it back to the board for consideration.
So one thing that you should also consider when you're doing that, and it's the reason I asked Tim to put the timeline column in here, is that when we write a draft permit for the board to consider, or at least a draft set of conditions for the board to consider, one of the things that's going to be attached to it is a timeline. So if it's a mitigation thing, it will be, this particular mitigation must be done within X number of days of a granting of a special permit, but for something like this, where there may be damage to, to the roadway, you need to consider a timeline of regular inspections, and then how soon after the damage is done, the repair will be made. So it's not a case of the truck damages and three months later...
Correct.
Some sort of repair is made. It needs to be inspected on a regular basis and repaired, and repaired...
Absconded, frankly.
Yeah, that's a possibility, especially if it... To Alex's point on the loading and unloading, because we're not talking about just delivery of materials to your site, we're also talking about whether, how, and when, and what route materials are taken from your site and delivered to your customers. So what's the route? I, I think Alex's point on when can the unloading and the loading be done?
To the maximum extent possible, the loading, the, the, the trucks need to be loaded generally in the morning, but at sometimes in the evening. Would be loaded between those hours of 7:00 and 6:00, if those are the hours.
Whatever the hours end up being.
Whatever the hours are.
Yeah.
Seven being a significant piece of the issue here, but...
Right.
But the, the notion would be that they're loaded either in the evening or in the morning, and they leave for the day. And they come back in the evening, they've spent the lion's share of the day at another location, installing, doing whatever they do. They come back and unload and park and leave. If they come back at 5:00 or 6:00, because they get back at 5:00 or 6:00, they're not going to, they will then not unload, they'll just leave the trucks as they are, so that they're not operating beyond 6:00. And then they would have to unload and load in the morning, before they head out for whatever the job is. So most of the, most of the landscaping activity happens elsewhere. There's the morning loading and afternoon loading, unloading, or whatever, and so operate through that as quickly and efficiently as possible, all be done within the area of the landcare yard, so that, with the exception of the dumpster location, but that would be just a quick in-hand, hand-unloading into the dumpster, and then park the truck and done. And then all of the loading activity happens within the area of the landcare yard, which we think is adequately buffered by the sound attenuation fence, the, and the wood barn itself.
How many vehicles in the, average in the morning going out?
We have, how many vehicles registered? We've submitted a list, yeah.
No, for landscaping. The average number of landscaping trucks going out are either two or three.
Two or three.
Average, yeah.
And then, Alex, I think you also asked where their... And then, Alex, I think you also asked where they're stored, where they're, we addressed where they're loaded, where are they stored overnight?
I think we, the proposal was to, at one point, was to store them on the other side of the barn, so out of the way. Understand that that may be an issue, they can be stored. The where they can be stored is wherever it's most appropriate, given all factors. Because it's in the evening or overnight, it's, they're not in use, they can be stored.
Good.
They can be stored within the landcare yard itself, in front of the bins, they can store, you know. I think that's a question of ultimately where, we proposed the other side of the barn, just for...
What else on this section two? There's a discussion of the plans for how people will be notified, the delivery drivers will be notified as to where to do it. As I said, there's still an outstanding question as to where the bulk materials should be stored, because the abutters have suggested the other site. There's a discussion of backup alarms. Alex, you had more questions on two?
I do.
Okay.
I do. It seems to me that what you're saying here is that the primary landscape activity that we would be authorizing is additional noise early in the morning...
Potentially.
And late at night. Basically, at both ends of the day, and then in the middle of the day, they're all gone, along with all the other people. We have to, as, as I tried to explain, it seems to me that currently there is a noise problem at there, even with the landscaping of, operating out of... Ken, you bring in additional trucks and load them up in the morning, and then unload them in the afternoon, you're going to make more noise. And what we're trying to do here is make a combined nursery landscaping operation quieter than the current nursery operation. In other words, we're not saying this is going to be a very quiet landscaping operation, but the net effect is going to be more noise than is there currently is now. It seems to me that what we are attempting to do, and what we have to do, is create an overall reduction of noise. And, you know, things like where you park the trucks. I mean, lined up on the far side of the barn, I think that if the sound attenuation fence works, that maybe is not a bad place for them. You know, putting them in front where there is no sound attenuation fence might not be a, might not be a good plan. But if they're started up and warmed up there, we have to know about that. We have to know. And then we have to know what a typical loading operation is. I mean, how long does it take? Does it take 10 minutes to load a truck? What, they presumably put mulch, they shrub, seed, fertilizer, trees. I don't know exactly what, but if the Bobcat has to scoot around picking up trees at seven in the morning, that is a problem. The trees probably should be brought to the loading area in the middle of the day, because they know what they're going to need for the next day.
So, in fact, a plan of operations, which I believe is described in the...
Operations plan, yes.
Yeah, okay. Is that something, I mean, you've heard Alex's questions, can you address those as far as how the loading would be done? Is it possible to load up, bring, move things to the right position during the day itself? How long does this operation take?
I can speak on that.
Okay.
For the nurturing and maintaining of the live plant material, it has to be in a position to sustain its life, so meaning it has to be in an area mulched in for moisture retention purposes and under irrigation. So, it's not healthy for the plant to be sitting in a, on a gravel parking lot for a prolonged period of time. So, it's better for the plant to stay mulched in, in an area prepared until we need it.
How close does that come? I think is going to be the next question. I mean, can you move it by five o'clock and load it in at six? Does it, is it the night before, is it immediately before it goes out?
Generally, immediately before it goes out, the way it's, it works now.
Okay. And that would be taken out by Bobcat and then loaded into the truck?
It depends on the size of the plant.
Okay.
Oftentimes, we try to do things with less Bobcat use, as much as possible, but the size of the plant will dictate the loading procedure.
And how long does it take typically to load up the truck?
Typically, if the crew comes in at seven, and we do our daily paperwork and clerical data and watering, they're generally out the door in about, with no longer than an hour and a half at the most.
Starting the loading at seven when they come in?
Seven thirty, generally.
Seven thirty?
Yes.
So, okay, so they're coming in at seven, out the door at eight thirty, but the loading actually, in that scenario, starts at seven thirty. So, it takes them an hour to load the two to three trucks?
Yes, I would feel comfortable saying that, yes. And they're all loading simultaneously. And sometimes, and keep in mind, some jobs are ongoing, in the scope of the work is such where they just go right to the job. So, it's kind of predicated by the job and where that particular job is for that day.
Mike?
Two quick questions. One is, I can't, I can't tell if the application's been revised or not, but I recall that at one point, the deliveries could, essentially between nine and two, but that there was a log for any deliveries that fell outside of those hours? The way this seems to read now is that their deliveries are between nine and two.
Say that deliveries will be limited to nine and three, and the change out of the dumpsters are between 10 and two.
Okay.
Deliveries would be limited between nine and three.
Okay.
And that a log would be, I think, would, a log would be maintained if there was a delivery that fell outside of that circumstance, and explaining what, why, you know, what, what it was.
Your deliveries are limited to nine to two by the zoning, so you're going to have to remove that three.
Well, it says nine to two.
It says nine to two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nine to two, yeah. Sorry?
You're saying trash was until...
I mean, unless it's changed, it says nine to two.
Yeah, it says nine to two right here.
And that's what it is.
I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any longer the language about the off-hour trapped by a log, and I'm...
It's in the zoning that the log is required, so it would have to remain, yeah, exactly.
I understand that the log is fine.
Right.
I'm asking you, because I use, I recall the language that said you were tracking, you were keeping a log for anything that was outside of those hours. Because that's, I don't see the language anymore about there being outside of those hours.
Oh, I see. The, the language here just says a log.
They're keeping a log.
I see, they're keeping a log, yes.
Yeah.
So, I guess I'm just confirming that you're, that you're keeping it from the...
Keeping a log of all, I think, thank you. I think that the intent was to say that deliveries are nine to two, which is permitted under zone, and we keep a log of all deliveries.
Great. That's what I was trying to clarify. And then, if the truck comes down from Maine, loaded up with firewood, and it's six o'clock in the morning, where does the truck go? Is that the truck's problem?
Truck's problem.
Okay. But they're not going to sit on...
No, in fact, they're told, "Don't appear before six, go, go get a cup of coffee at Nook and Farms, go, get out of here, go somewhere else."
It says on the next paragraph, "Standard set of delivery directions, see attached." Where do I find those? I'm thinking I might see on those...
At the back.
The back of this section?
Actually, in the back.
Section 22 in my book now. I'm wondering if it tells them, you know, don't show up.
It says, it says nine to two is the delivery hours, dumpster hours are 10 to two, delivery directions it provides, notes, parking on the street is not allowed, access, tells you where it's at, it just says parking on the street is not allowed.
We should probably identify the streets that it's not allowed on, so they don't think it's a street in front of the interest, they don't think it's just for us, but they understand it's also Hillside.
And probably just add up a line that says, you know, "Please don't come between these hours, you will not be able to wave in the street." I put the tabs in.
What else, Alex?
With respect to the log, not only does the log have to say this delivery was made out of hours, but it's got to show good cause, because if the log shows a delivery out of hours and doesn't show good cause, that is grounds for revoking the permit. And, and people have, they have to understand that you just don't keep a log and do business as usual. If you, if you're not doing your deliveries as you are supposed to, and you don't have good cause, you've got a problem. The same is true with trucks. You have your standard directions, saying, "Don't park on Parkwood." And if the trucks say, well, if you're not going to tell us where to park, we're going to park on Parkwood, they have to understand that if the trucks, notwithstanding their directions, park on Parkwood, then that's cause for revoking the permit. It, you know, these trucks wouldn't be there but for the fact they're making deliveries to this business, and they're responsible.
I have a question. Is, I know this is a brand-new application, but is there any other permits we can look at that show the same language?
It's unlikely, because this is a brand-new zoning under which you are the first applicant.
Right, and I understand that, but it is, there are plenty of other businesses in residential areas, and as you mentioned with the signs, at the sign, the last meeting, you're trying to provide a standard look throughout the town, and I feel like there should be a standard start of operation, and if you do call the police station, the standard start of operation and understanding in town is 7:00 AM, and that should be across the board.
This is why we're looking at the other special permits ourselves, to see what the, I can't answer that, because I haven't seen all the special permits. But I will say that the standard that you are being held to is the zoning for which you came to the board and to town meetings have approved.
Right.
So, we can look to see what the other standards are, but that is why you're here.
And as you recall, when we had this discussion in front of the planning board with the zoning, we were trying to insist on the 7:00 AM, and we were assured by the board that we could come back and discuss it, or else this eight o'clock would never have been written in that. So, it was written with the assurance that we would be able to come back and do the seven o'clock. And basically, if you look at that meeting tape, it was because we wanted the meeting to be over and we wanted to end the discussion. So, that's why we're here with that. But also, also, I would like to see any other businesses in town who have to keep a log of all their incoming deliveries every single day.
Maggie, you're not going to get that.
Yeah, again, it's, this is under the zoning.
Yeah, but it's just...
Maggie, we're paying attention to what's written into the zoning and what you're going to be allowed to do under the zoning.
Yes.
Okay?
All right, what else under section two here?
So, you said in the, so I can't find it, the directions to the deliveries will indicate specifically on what you send to people, "Don't park on Parkwood, don't park on..."
We can, we can require the streets that are listed, yes.
Like, I just made a condition.
There is no parking within, you know, a two-mile radius of the site, so don't even attempt, motion, truck drives looking off.
That might eliminate the highway rest area, but I understand, I understand what you're saying, yeah, yeah.
Truck drives looking off a highway and they'll park very close to the highway way.
Yeah, and this is, this is...
Where would a good place to park a truck be?
The highway, I think the rest area.
Probably 128 in the Blue Hills there, where there's no houses or nothing, and you pull to the side and saw.
That's where they do pull up, right when they get on 28.
Yeah, or the, or the 128 rest area.
So, they could get breakfast and support a local business.
It's not even an exit, you just park right before the Westwood exit, and just pull. Now, all the trucks are all sitting there in the morning.
That's right, tell, because they go to pull up right at, right before 95.
Yeah, just sit there right there and wait.
We, we did prepare something, and I can't put my hands on it at the minute. The extent that it isn't safe...
I have it, I have it right in front of me. We'll amend it a little bit, but no.
But, but to that point, Mike, when we get to the point where we've listed the conditions that we would like to impose, and again, the applicant can disagree, but then that goes into our final decision, I think the more specificity we have, such as listing the particular streets, such as listing that the log must show good cause, I think that will be critically important to ensuring the enforceability of this.
I just want to go back to that point one more time, though.
Yes.
Not to hang on the log point, but we're talking about good cause. So, so deliveries are going to be allowed for good cause? Okay, so then...
They're allowed between nine and two, but then...
Why are we, why are we referencing it at all?
Because if a delivery is made out of hours, then we should know that. You know, that's what, that's the whole point of giving, first of all, it's in the zoning that they have to, but second of all, the idea was so that if there were complaints that deliveries were being made out of hours, this log would produce it. But Alex's point is, you just can't say, "Oh, yeah, we're continually having deliveries at four o'clock when it's supposed to stop at two."
That's my only concern, is everybody, applicant neighbors playing, where everybody wants specificity here, so that there's some clarity as to what...
Absolutely.
Needs to be enforced. To me, good cause is, that's not specific. That's going to just be, you know...
So, then we need to come up with a more...
Truck was here and we needed to let them in. I mean, I guess that's, is that good cause?
That's a good point. How do we define...
Maybe you could say the time period, maybe you could say that a month's time, we should say no more than two deliveries outside of the specified times, right? I mean, that's given the accidental...
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned about the specificity, because that's what we're hearing about, so...
Or we could just say...
If you give a provision for good cause, anything can be a good cause.
Or then what we say is...
Or anything could be a bad cause.
Right.
It can be, depending on who's making, making the statement.
Then we can say, "The log must record when the deliveries were made, if the planning board," and we may consider that we want to do a review, you know, a period review after this goes into effect, that's for a later conversation, "If the board sees a continual pattern of out-of-time deliveries, then that becomes cause for revocation." I think, I think there are ways that we can word this where that makes sense, but the point is, they have to record them so that we do see what the pattern is, and what we're hoping is that the pattern is between nine and two, and no outliers.
It seems like you might want to build in some warnings before revocation also.
I agree with that.
And I also think it's going to be very hard to, for a business to monitor whether a truck is parked on Parkwood when they're operating their business, and for that to be a ground for revocation seems difficult for a business to manage.
All right.
So, I think, you know, if there's a warning, like if a neighbor said, "There, you know, there's a truck parked over here, there doesn't respond to it, and it's a continual problem," then that's different than, "There's a truck parked there, a neighbor calls the building official and says there's a park, a truck parked there, meanwhile, there hasn't been notified." So, I do think there ought to be something built in, there ought to be notified, they ought to have opportunity to remedy it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to go back to good cause again.
Go right back.
Is the good cause language in the zoning? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
I don't believe it is.
Okay.
Page, Tim, reflects where we are.
If you, if you have a provision that says you can, you must record any off-hour deliveries, what, you know, for, that they're allowed by good cause, you're, in my opinion, you're allowing them.
Operation starts in the corner of the...
Okay.
Operation starts from...
So, to Mike's point, maybe you need to limit the number that can happen off-hours. But, but I, you hear my point?
I, I hear your point, yeah.
You're, you're making allowance, and that essentially extends the hours, in my opinion.
So, then we could take out the good cause, but say that we're looking for a pattern, and to Mike's point, maybe you establish, okay, if it's less than, if it's at X number of outside time deliveries, you get a warning, if it's at Y, you get a second warning, if it's at Z, if the pattern goes to Z and it's significant, then the permit is revoked.
Right.
So, and that may be the way of thinking, because of quantitation. Josh, you had a question?
You may consider just extending the hours to three o'clock, because it's less likely...
Can't.
Well, I'm going to ask...
It's in the zoning.
Zoning doesn't allow it.
That's the problem.
So, good cause to me would be all of our regular deliveries are nine to two. Like, our mulch deliveries are, you know, we can, they're fairly local. Our, you know, dumpster is local. Our, a lot of our deliveries are from local, being New England to a little further south. Those we can certainly have more control of. It is the, the deliveries that come from cross-country that only... that only really happen a handful of times in the spring that we might, the drivers are not familiar with Boston, they're not familiar with New England. As stated, they make all these multiple stops. And that, to me, is maybe a good cause, that it's a, coming from west coast, and it might happen just a handful of times, you know, less than a handful of times. But all of our local deliveries, we can certainly control and restrict. Even tomorrow, I have a perennial order coming up, and they're coming between 10:00 and 11:00. That's Connecticut, we can control. It's, it's the further away where the drivers are just not familiar with the areas.
So then, as we consider how we want to address that-
Again, I mean, you just said yourself, if it's, you said a handful, you said it's probably less than a handful. We say that, you know, if it fell outside of the delivery time three times in a month, I mean, that's-
That's one way of quantifying it, so, yeah, exactly.
Which, you know-
So then we need to consider what number would be appropriate.
Your attention is to try to get it done right. And I understand the guy's coming from Oregon or something, and it's like, he's already starting four hours or three hours behind him.
That's fine, maybe there just needs to be a "but in no condition," you know, can certain hours be allowed.
Right.
At some point, you can unload. And I think, obviously, I think you probably agree with that. I mean, you're not going to unload it too in the morning regardless. But, but I think you do, we have to put a perimeter in place because that's what we're being asked to do, and I think we have to figure out something, so.
That's a good idea, and limited number, and-
But a no case.
A no case beyond what I've done. Between the hours of X and X.
All right, so a couple more things under two that we should look at. Location, Alex brought it up already, I think we need to talk about it a little bit further. The paragraph one, two, three, fourth, the fourth paragraph talks about where things will be unloaded. So bulk materials into the bin, firewood delivery into the wood barn, and then how it's going to leave, and then the idea of backup alarms. So does anybody have any questions on these two paragraphs? Alex, do you have further points on those that you want to bring up?
Well, I, I thought that we, we, with respect to the fact if you don't want the log to know the good cause, you can just note the reason.
Yeah.
Why it, why it was delivered late. Because if it's a stupid reason, it's, it's not going to, it's not going to look good. But I, I don't think that saying you get, you get three freebies, that, that, you know, don't worry about it if you keep it within three a month. It seems to me that the, the goal is zero a month. But if they occur, then there should be, I hate to say good cause, there should be a reason. And, and the reason should be, when you look at it, credible. You should say, "Yeah, this makes sense," rather than, you know, "It doesn't make sense." So, that said, I had a comment on your next, uh-
Yeah?
The next one was the loading?
The loading, uh, the delivery of where materials are, where they're offloaded, and then loading, of course, we have another one. So we've got bulk mati, nursery stock is offloaded and prepared for planting in the appropriate field. Bulk materials offloaded into the appropriate bin, which is in that landcare yard. Firewood delivery past the wood barn, back into the barn so that wood can be unloaded within. I've actually got a question on that myself.
But of course, the firewood, I guess, is a question what we have to address, whether or not there will be firewood deliveries before we describe. I, I'm not sure we're not putting the cart before the horse here.
I think, you know, as Tim and I were looking at this matrix and considering about how to go forward with this, there are certainly areas where some of these things are mentioned two or three times. And one of our goals is to look at how we can narrow this extensive matrix so that we're only talking about firewood once, or we're only talking about deliveries once. On firewood, I just want to put out an idea that relates to the unloading so it's appropriate for this section without prejudicing whether or not we're going to allow it. But the applicant at one point had talked about putting material into the trucks, the gem matting material, the thick material into the trucks, so that as things were loaded into the trucks, it would deaden the noise. And I was wondering if that same material could be put on the floor of the barn so that if we allow firewood, when it's unloaded onto the floor of the barn, it's not hitting concrete or a hard floor, it's hitting that matting. So just something to consider as you're thinking about these other things. Any other comments on delivery? I think we talked about some of the unloading, but we've got the bulk materials. Yes, Alex, I see your hand waving.
We, a truck is going to turn into this driveway.
Yes.
It's going to be an 18-wheeler, or something smaller, or it may be a 24-wheeler. It's going to, the, the big trucks are going to pull in, and if they're full of trees, they're going to stop somewhere. Presumably, they're going to stop in the operations area, and then they're going to be unloaded with a lot of Bobcats, which will take the, I'd like to know, I mean, this is what I assume is going to happen. And then when the truck is empty, it's going to back up and turn around and leave. That's what I think is going to happen. But I haven't actually, in their plan, I don't see that it's specified.
So you would like that specification?
Well, I would like that specification. And I'd like to know about these three or four trucks that are leaving every day with getting loaded up. I mean, presumably, they'll be parked in the, the operations yard, and then they'll-
So, Alex, are you asking for taking the plan and marking, like, the areas in which this activity could occur? Because it looks to me like from a maneuverability point of view, there's pretty limited areas in which the vehicles can actually fit, the big ones anyway, the 18-wheelers. But if, they can come in straight, and then they can back up and come back out. There's really no other place that they would fit, in my look at this plan, but-
I think the way I intended to describe it in the, in the application was that firewood, that all loading and all unloading would take place within the landcare yard. They would drive past the front barn, past the front of the wood barn, and then back in, unload, and forward out.
So maybe it's just a diagram, you know, when you, when you do the turn radius kind of with the trucks, you know, you can just put that template in there and show that. I think that would get at that. And then if you identified the staging area for the trucks in the morning, how often do you, do you get a delivery a day of a, of an 18-wheeler? Or how often does an 18-wheeler come with deliveries, if it's a day or a week, or what have you? Maggie or Josh?
And Cheryl doesn't yet have the application, I don't think, so you don't have all of it. Yeah, you don't have all of the materials, so.
Sorry, so I'm just trying to understand, how often are we talking about a vehicle like this coming in?
We had put together a schedule, and it amounts in average to, what did, what was it? One per-
Yeah, one per day.
One per day.
One per day, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that's, that's fine.
Not, not 18-wheelers, but just any truck, any delivery.
Any truck.
Yes. The average, it is excluding firewood, there are 40 weeks for the season of the, of the landscaping nursery season.
Well, landscaping, nursery is long.
Nursery, so the average of deliveries per week is about one, excuse me, four lo, four deliveries per week of Nutra Mulch, two of Himala Mulch, one of Playground Chips, four of Loam, four of Nutrasoil, four of Organic Grow Compost, four of Stone.
Sorry, it's in the application, not in the first line?
That's the maximum, right, and that's the maximum number of deliveries per week. There's a total of 55 deliveries of Nutra Mulch. The maximum number of deliveries would be four in a week. That's at the start of the season, when they're just sort of loading up, getting started. And then there's a, they get replenished as necessary. But there's a total of 55 deliveries over that 40-week period, so.
So that's really moving into section three, but I would suggest that at least the maximum deliveries per week, section of that grid, and perhaps the whole thing, be included as part of the conditions.
I think that would make sense.
One matter that I think that you have to take into account is that if the trees are going to be used in the landscaping business, and if the mulch is going to be used in the landscaping business, currently, the landscaping business isn't doing that.
Right.
You're going to have more trucks, you're going to have more deliveries. You have to, because you're going to be taking in more materials, because you're going to be not only servicing the nursery, but you're going to be servicing the landscaping business. So, you, you know, we-
These numbers are based on?
The combined.
The combined, thank you.
2012.
2012, right, okay.
But the question is, what is the current?
I thought the zoning refers back to the 2012.
The zoning requires that it be based on the 2012, yes.
If you do more than 2012, if their business expands, they'll have to find another place to put it.
But, so these are 2012 numbers, Maggie? So I think that does move us a little bit into three. Before we go fully into three, the backup alarms on the Bobcats and loaders, as I recall from an earlier conversation, it had been proposed that some of those can actually be turned off if there's a clear field of view for the Bobcats, certainly.
Yes.
Has that been done? Will that be done? Are there, and I think the other thing, they're off now? And then we were also talking about some OSHA requirements that allow for those that can't be turned off to be, the decibel level to be lowered. It would be helpful to us to have those regulations so that we can cite them?
I thought I had provided-
You may, you may have put it in the back, yeah, okay.
The regulation-
You have the tabs.
The regulation allows back alarms, backup alarms to be off if there's someone directing.
Right.
So for larger trucks, if there's someone on site directing them to back up, they can turn the backup alarms off, and then we propose to do that as much as possible.
Okay.
If there's, if there's no one backing up, the regulations require, no one directs, the regulations do require that the backup alarm be on. And to the extent that the truck movements, the internal truck movements would be forward only as much as possible, obviously, you know, they can, there's room for the dump trucks to pull around and stop in front of the appropriate bay and be loaded. So, less backing with respect to those trucks. And certainly, if there's someone loading them, there'll be someone there to direct them so that they could do it without them.
And so we only have control over our trucks, not incoming delivery trucks?
So those alarms would stay at whatever level those are set at?
Is it possible for those alarms to be turned off if you have someone there to direct them?
Most, I-
I don't know.
I, I think you'd be, would be reaching for the stars if we-
I'm not suggesting that you can, I'm suggesting that as much as you can.
Most trucks don't have a toggle switch.
Correct.
They, they come standard, a standard truck is, it is connected because that's, if you ever got pulled over by a DOT, it has to be on. So some companies, like us with our Bobcats, we have taken off and been able to shut off the backup key because we control it on our own property. But we don't have control over incoming delivery trucks. They're not our trucks, we don't own them, we can't tell them what to do. That's why we proposed a forward-only traffic pattern.
Right.
But then they didn't like, the butter didn't like that, so that's why that was removed.
Okay, so let's move into, because I think we're already starting to get there, the bulk agricultural earth materials under three. So you're proposing three-sided contained bins, setback 40 feet from the lot line, bins made of concrete block, kind of budding either the wood barn or the interior fence along the property line, 24 Forest Street. We've got the environmental regulations on there. Does anybody have any questions of the storage of these materials?
I do.
Yes.
I think I'd like to just go right to the question about whether or not any of these materials could be stored across the road. I think it's been asked, and I think we're just, we'd just love to hear an answer because I think it just, might as well just get it off, get it out there.
There are, there are some potential advantages and disadvantages. We'd like to hear both of those.
There was limited access for truck, vehic, vehicular trucks of size getting to the back of that property due to telephone pole locations. So, logistically, it's a challenge, it actually wouldn't work.
Is the telephone poles the only impetus to the trucks?
Excuse me?
Is the telephone, are the telephone poles the only restriction on the trucks? Are there other restrictions?
And commitments that we've made to other neighbors.
And the historical wall. We'd have to enlarge the opening of the historical wall.
Okay.
What can you fit through there? I think you do use it.
Is mulch stored on this, mulch and compost on the site now? What's, what's actually on that site right now?
It's our own compost that we, that we make.
Okay.
How is it brought over there in dumps?
So it's brought over by our trucks, which are smaller, what, six-wheeler? So it, it doesn't have access for 10-wheeler or 18-wheeler trucks.
And those are the ones that are delivering the materials?
The mulch, that's correct, yeah.
Is the telephone pole on the plan for that property?
It's right across, it's right across from the mulch of the driveway.
I'm sorry, Josh, can you, you point that out again?
It's at 217 Hillside Street. It's directly across from the right-hand driveway, as you look at the front of the house.
Okay.
Heading back towards the wood chip pile. There's a, there's a, it's directly right across from that opening, underneath the second E on Hillside Street. As you view it from lot 4B, the lot, the line between lot 10 and the lot, line between lot 4B would be slightly to the right of that.
Oh, okay.
Look at the bottom of the plan.
Yes.
Yeah, somewhere in here.
Oh, so it's not marked on the plan? What's the squiggly that looks like, is that a streetlight?
It's a fieldstone wall.
And there's a streetlight in front of it? A little marking?
There's a tiny marking.
There's a tiny marking, that's usually a-
It'd be a hydrantist option.
Usually a pole, but- That usually indicates a light or a pole.
Yeah.
It may be, it may be a combination of telephone pole with streetlight.
Yeah, that's actually the pole, Josh.
Okay. I know it's in that general area.
It says the marking.
So right here?
The truck swat, when we tried that at one point in time, the trucks were not making the swing because of whatever was across the street there.
And what's the width of the stone wall at that point, for getting in there? Okay.
Emily, it looks like it's about-
This is the scale.
It's like it's close to 20 feet.
It looks like it's about 20 feet. You've got a, you've got a secondary wall, it probably brings it down to 18, 16 to 18.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It's not so much the width, it's more the swing. We talked about that, whatever, the matrix, whatever you, you need to do, that-
We can move on, I just wanted to get that question answered, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the storage of the bulk materials?
What have the bins constructed of?
Again, Alex's first, you got to raise.
Sorry, Alex, sorry.
I'd like to know where they're going to be.
All right.
I'd like to know why, getting back to the yard, and Cheryl says there's only one way you can turn a truck around. I see a couple of ways you could turn a truck around. And I see that the shed, which was the home of the artisans this last year, could easily be moved to make that yard significantly more truck-friendly and give trucks much more ability to move, especially getting into the, the sort of material bin area. So I have that question, why couldn't the shed be moved to make that yard a more functional, functional place? And I assume the trucks will pull up, and back in, and then pull out. So it would be one backing movement. They pull up next to the wood barn- be one backing movement. They pull up next to the wood barn, and then they back in and get, well, they're actually, they back right into the bin, I think, don't they? I think they do.
Some of the bins are on the, up against the wood barn, not up against the fence.
The shed is a garage. It's not a shed. It's just, we termed it a shed. So it's, Alex, it's almost a footprint, it's almost the size of your barn.
It's sixteen feet square, right?
And then is that a port, that's a porch that's indicated on it, or?
Correct.
I think there's, there's plenty of-
Well, I mean, I still, I mean, it may be obvious to people how the trucks are going to be using this yard, but it's not obvious to me.
So I think, I think what Cheryl had mentioned earlier is essentially a circulation diagram showing what type of truck, you know, wood delivery, mulch delivery, their own trucks, a circulation diagram that shows exactly how each type of truck moves through. I think that's reasonable to request, to address that. You've heard Alex's question on whether or not the shed can be moved to, to change that. Obviously, I don't think we can expect a decision on that or an answer on that, because you're going to have to look at it. But just note that that's a question that has been asked.
Well, I, I, it is a possibility for the future if the operations area is not efficient.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think if they're looking at the circulation diagram, they should be also looking at the efficiency of it, and what else would make that efficient.
But we do want, getting back to what I said before, we want those trucks to move into the site, into the operations area. We don't want them on the periphery, because there are people across the street here and across the street there. We want them up towards the middle of the site.
To your point, because that's where the sound mitigation is supposed to buffer that, yes.
It simply is that on the Hillside Street and Forest Street side, there are no sound mitigation things. So we-
We want the sound to be where it's being mitigated.
We don't want the trucks parked on the edge of the site.
Well, just from a point, we are a nursery. We have customers there throughout the whole entire day with children. My children are there. We are extremely concerned about safety, and we don't have, and we don't encourage trucks to park places where they could cause harm to our clients or to our families. So, they're not encouraged to park anywhere they like. They have a special spot where they already park, so they're out of the way.
So then, you can give us a circulation diagram and show us that, so. And do everybody wait to be recognized before speaking? So, all right, so we've talked about the delivery rates a little bit already, and I think your point to including those in our list of conditions makes a great deal of sense. I think the next paragraph just-
You have way up the smell.
Well, this is what I was going to bring up, is, so, we're talking, we've also haven't yet talked about the bins, their construction, their, how they're done, they're the, the three-sided. And the next paragraph is on dust. I don't think it actually mentions odor, but I think your point, Alex, to odor, I think we should start talking about the construction of the bins, what the implications of that are, how we're going to deal with the, with the dust, the odor, anything else that comes out a result of the type of storage that we're getting. So let's have a look at that, and then, let me just see what's next. Beds, we've talked about five, six, and seven. We've sort of talked about, I'd like to finish up seven tonight, through seven tonight, then I'd like to stop our discussion, let the applicants sit back, and call up the public for their comments on what we've talked about so far, and obviously, Mr. Joe Henning's letter. So, let's talk about storage, dust, odor. Any questions?
Well-
Okay.
Sorry, Cheryl, she asked a question a few minutes ago, and it actually was when I realized that I don't see in here, but I think I've seen it, material, a photo of the material that it's made of, the, the storage. I just don't remember where I saw it, because I'm not seeing, you actually showed the blocks, right?
Yes.
I know, so-
Concrete block.
Is it in the details? I mean, I remember seeing it somewhere.
Yeah, it's in there.
Two by two by four, maybe?
Yeah.
Whatever.
Graziano gets them-
So-
Half your bar. Yeah.
So it's concrete?
Yes.
It's concrete, what are they, two by two, two by four?
They range in size.
All right, so they're buried.
Two by two, two by four.
Is it interlock?
Uh, there's a keyway on the top, yes.
And so it's concrete, side, side, back, open front, open top?
Correct.
Okay.
The back is not concrete block. We had the existing wall, the barn.
On the barn side-
Okay.
There is concrete barn until you get up through-
Six feet.
Six feet.
At the point where there is then wood.
Okay.
So that barn, the barn would serve as the back for the six bins along the side of the barn. On the opposite side, it would have to have, it's not back.
It has the fence, the fence, it's the fence.
But there would be blocks there.
And how tall are they?
Eight feet.
Eight feet tall?
I'm off there.
Okay. Mike, Cheryl? On dust?
And then with respect, that's with respect to dust.
Hey, whoa, whoa, hang on. I recognize Cheryl. Cheryl? I'm sorry, you said Mike first, though. Yeah, but he didn't have anything, so you're next. All right. On dust, the, in dry conditions, do you take any special measures? Have those been outlined?
Yes, there's, the plan shows four sprinklers located on the corners of the material bins. That would be, I think we suggest, minimum of three times per week for fifteen minutes at a time. There are twenty sprinklers spread throughout the property, and that we would, those sprinklers would be on, and then at, in other locations, we can draw. But a minimum during, in dry conditions, a minimum of three times a week, fifteen minutes a day, as necessary, to tamp dust and keep odor.
And then what would be, the items that would be stored in these bins are the items that are on, in this table. So, neutral mulch, hemlock mulch, playground chips, loam, organic soil, organic grow compost, stone sand, but not the firewood. The firewood is obviously the barn, so, okay. So we just need to know where these are being stored.
So the, I think we say that the mulches are stored in the bins closest to Josh's residence, on the three bins on the Westerly side.
Okay.
And then the, the chips and the loams and the, and the comp, the other stone and stuff is stored in the other material bins.
Okay. Other questions on dust, odor? You had mentioned odor, so.
I have. The question of odor is, as you recall, when the neighbors of Thomas, when Thomas had their bins next to the neighbor's, neighbor's line, the neighbors went, they were really severely impacted by odor. And eventually, Thomas moved them into the very center of the site in order to, to address the odor situation. I don't see what the odor, odor mitigation plan is here.
Yeah.
But I do know that these earth, these materials can have a very significant odor. And I know, I think the zoning refers to covering them at certain points, and that, you know, that there may be a fire hazard there. I don't know. But the, the zoning requires an odor mitigation plan, and I don't see that it's been, it has been adequately addressed.
I'm just looking ahead to see if I see it elsewhere, but I don't recall seeing it elsewhere in the application, so when you come back to us, oh, actually, page thirteen. No, it's an odor attenuation plan on page thirteen. So let's just double check. It talks about the fencing, talks about the unloading, must be the next one, evergreen plant material. Talks about dust. This is over onto fourteen, about quarter of the way down. It does not mention odor, so if odor is dealt with the same way as dust, then that needs to be pointed in there.
Well, if it needs to be justified, then you can treat odor the same way as dust.
That's the next thing I was going to say, yes.
That would be the first time that had been suggested to me.
Fair enough. So then, we need to know how you're treating the odor, and if sprinkler does it, then we need to know how and why, and if it doesn't, you're going to need to do something else. Oh, but odor, well, I guess I'm, I wonder what odor are we having a request to be addressed? Is it from the bins, or is it from something else? It'd be from the materials stored in the bins.
From the mulch, basically.
There is compost as well.
Yeah.
Does that get us to the compost bin on the far side of the, the wood barn?
This is the far side of, oh, on the other side of the blue, yes, that would do, because that's the location of bins, so.
Why would that not be across the street with the other composters?
So that's a good question. Ned, on the plan of proposed conditions and drainage plan, you've got a recycle slash compost bin on the opposite side of the wood barn from the other bins. So, what is that for, and why is it located there as opposed to elsewhere?
That is our, you know, when any plant material may die in the fields, we go and we remove it from the field, we put it in the compost pile. If any plant material, if any perennials died, I put it in the compost pile. So it's not a finished product.
Mm-hmm.
The compost on the other side of the barn is a finished, ready-to-use product.
So the first one, the one on that side of the barn, is something that's part of your ongoing operations? It's not something that you're selling further? So, what is that stored in?
That's only really a temporary location. It is in between the, the barn and the shop. There's a, it's a kind of two-sided area that's kind of holds all the, the material in there. And then, usually, we end up then removing it and taking it down to the street, to our real compost area down behind 217.
So it's basically a temporary daily store. How often does it get moved out of there? Is it something, a once-a-week thing? Is it a daily thing? Is it, I don't, I don't have a sense of how much is stored there.
Once a week, maybe, once every two weeks. That is what we have our, our composting permit from the Department of Agricultural Resources for.
Okay. And that covers both sites?
Yeah.
Okay. Alex, does that answer your question?
The answer is that except for the fact, once again, compost can be odorous, and I just wonder whether or not that's a good location for a compost pile. Maybe it should be brought farther into the center of the site.
Are there other spaces where it would be appropriate to hold that? I'm not, actually, I'm not actually asking you, Alex. I'm, I'm looking up to the applicant-
We did move a finished product pile from behind the Joe Henning enrolled property. When this whole process started, it was approximately thirty feet behind their property line, so we've already centrally located those products.
Okay.
As well as the mulches. So, even though we didn't have a permit in place, we went ahead, did that anyway to help mitigate the situation.
Okay.
So that is already in fact in place and operational.
All right. So the, but this smaller, your own, is there another place?
That wouldn't be something that would generate the odor. It's the finished product.
That's the odorous?
This is more brush-like than anything.
Dead.
Yeah.
Dead, all right. Let me see where we are. Any other further questions on bulk storage of materials, location, dust?
How often are they filled? Do we, we know that?
I didn't hear the question.
How often are they, how often are the bins filled?
And, and we, you, you know, I, getting back to the 2012 levels, admittedly, that is capped. Presumably, the levels currently are well below that, because the landscaping business is not being conducted on the site. If you bring it back up, you're going to create more truck traffic than currently exists. Maybe it's the same as what exists in 2012. But I do point out that there currently is a noise problem, even without the landscaping business, and our mission, our goal, the reason we're here, is to make conditions better with a combined operation. Not to just put more noise on top of what's already existing and say, but look, we've taken a few mitigation. It, it's meant, at the end of the day, it's, it is meant to be a better, quieter, more efficient operation. That's what we're getting to. And so, here we have the bins, and once again, they're going to get filled more often than they currently are. We need, do we have, do we have, do you specify just how often they're going to be filled?
Yes.
On page nine on the table? And to this point, where you've got the total volume in cubic yards, that's for the entire year, correct?
For the year.
Yeah.
Yep. So the bins that you have are of a size that can accommodate the ebb and flow of those materials. So there's going to be no point during the year at which those bins are overflowing, because a delivery has come in, those are adequately sized?
Yes.
Because that'll be something that we look for, is that the bins are not overflowing, that the materials are not stored elsewhere on site, because they can all fit in there.
In fact, not all of those materials are present on site at the same time. So occasionally, you might have two, two bins filled with one product. So you might have, in May, the early season, neutral mulch in two bins. You might not have the stone chips in until later. They, they, they come in and out at different times. But there was, there's no reason or no occasion where a bin would be over full, because there's adequate capacity on all, all of the bins to handle the, the ebb and flow of material.
All right. So let's move on to five, which actually I think we've already talked about, which is the matting of the, putting the rubber matting into the firewood delivery trucks. As Alex pointed out earlier, we also have to note whether or not that's going to be something we allow, and we talk about that a little bit later on. But, again, that same matting, my question is out there, is whether, if you're putting in the dump trucks, can you also put it on the floor? We talked a little bit about 217 and 237 Hillside Streets. This is number six, being used for composting. Does anybody else have any questions on this section? We've got the composting certificate in our package somewhere.
And there's a current one.
And there's, that is the current one?
There is a current one.
Okay, great. So, when you submit supplemental materials, that would be useful to have. How often does that get renewed? Is that annual?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But the permit, if there were a permit, would have to address the composting that would occur behind the barn.
Okay.
But as described, because it isn't described in the application, and once again, the-
I guess that would suggest whether compost is the correct word for that. So maybe you could think about a different way to describe that. Doesn't sound like it's really compost.
Right. It's part of the, under the M D A R, we have to fill out, they call it their composting certificate. So we have to fill it out every year. So that is what they call it, and that's what we follow.
Maybe in your, in the application itself, you can clarify that it's-
Yeah.
Dead material. Not in the application, in supplementary materials. Okay. Yeah, the application is submitted. Anything else, as I said, must be in a supplemental memo.
In, in our chart, it is, because it is, our product is organic grow, which is the finished product.
Oh, so that's your own product?
No, that's the, the finished product that is not our product.
Okay.
In the chart, in the bulk agricultural materials chart, it says organic grow.
Yep.
And that is the finished product that is not ours.
Okay.
So I guess my suggestion is based on Alex's stated concerns is, in the supplemental material, is to explain the type of material this is, even though it sounds like you have to just use the word compost for your permitting, but that it actually is something that is there for a week. It moves over to your other compost. It doesn't generate odor. So because if that were to be a different kind of compost down the road, then it would be a different understanding than what we have today, you know, for what we've been told is stored there.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. As you're looking at supplemental materials, you have a number of things in here that are technical terms or that are terms that are used for this application, like the land care yard, I think grow-out area, if I remember correctly, came up at a previous meeting. The organic grow compost, explaining that that's a product and not, so defining the terms, so those defined terms can go into the application would be important. So anything else on 217 and 237? If not, then let's look at the last one for tonight, which is the movement and understanding of how the snow and ice management services works on this lot. So it's seasonal business. It's noticed, noted. It's prepared, equipped, and stored in the wood barn before and after use. Offseason plows and other equipment stored neatly in the land care yard. Does anybody have any questions on these?
We need to know the 2012 levels so that we can, we can.
So that's equipment and.
And presumably, once again, the trucks with their plow blades on are parked in the operations area, ready to go. And that's where they would be operating out of. Or maybe they come out of the wood barn. I mean, I don't know. It doesn't say what the plan is.
Well, I think that actually covers G. We can go ahead and take that off tonight because G is the parking plan. And we've already talked about the fact that we need to know the circulation, we need a circulation diagram. I think a parking diagram to go along with that.
But we have to determine advocacy of the parking.
Oh, yeah, we're not done with talking about parking. I'm just saying as far as information that we need to request from them, because it's not just the parking of the, where the spaces are located, which we certainly see it on the plan, it's what's actually being parked there, when. So, and I don't think it mentions in the parking plan where the storage of the off-season plows and other equipment is. So we may want to consider that. Anything else?
Are you, are we doing the parking plan now?
Yeah, why not, since we've talked about parking plan enough? And then I want to move to the public here.
But maybe the folks should be able to comment on this last section first.
Well, if we add in the parking plan.
I mean, the last section does have seven, seven.
What I was gonna say.
The operations section does have seven specific subsections.
I have, do you have a question on this note?
Okay, let's do this, a question on snow and ice and all, then a shot. Yep.
The last sentence, off-season plows and other equipment shall be stored neatly in the land care yard. Is that the, is that the answer to the question that Ms. Ennis just asked? Is that you're storing the materials in the land care yard off-season?
Do we have, do we have that noted? Does it interfere in any way with the?
Previously, they said they're going to be stored in the jog that's to the right of the applicant's house at 24 single, 24 Forest Street. Is that correct? So they'll be stored in that jog area.
With that there, that's where they're going to be stored. Okay, so then just mark that when we get the revised plans. It's up where they are so we know.
And then just the second question I had is just, can you explain, I understand that this is subcontracted effectively, right? So.
Some, not all.
So not all. So.
So they have three plows. They have one, two plows that is attached to dump trucks and one plow that gets it on a bobcat.
Does the subcontracting come to your property?
No. They go out.
Where are the subcontractors?
It's all.
In your, let me, let me, let me, if I can phrase it differently. Here in your application, you show invoices for Driscoll and I think Red Brick was the other one?
Crimson.
Crimson, sorry. Who was it?
Crimson.
Crimson. Do they use your prop, do they use your property?
No.
Okay. So I guess my question is, why would they count towards your 2012 level if they're not on your property? If you're just, if you're just a, if you're just subcontracting out for your, you know, G C-ing for your clients, that, is that something that we, there's no real impact? So I guess, I'm just trying to figure out how we evaluate that. This doesn't really indicate to us how much plowing you're doing.
It's, that was, that was sort of difficult to explain because every year is a different year. This year.
Well, but I understand, but 2012 level was supposed to be the cap, but.
But what are you actually doing?
We've got two dump trucks.
You have your, okay.
We go, we go out and we plow streets and we plow parking lots and elsewhere.
Okay.
That's what they do.
Two dump trucks, plows attached?
During a snow and ice emergency.
Okay.
And they go wherever they're contracted to go. It might be the hospital parking lot. It might be streets in the neighborhood. It's varying things. And it varies on a year-by-year basis. This year, they were out every day for six weeks straight.
But you have a second-tier subcontractor.
Sometimes they do it.
Helps you out with the plowing.
No, sometimes you do it as a sub.
We, we're hired as a sub.
Oh, okay. So that's what we're trying to figure out.
You're the second-tier subcontractor and says.
We give the front of those.
Oh, one at a time, guys.
Yes.
Yeah. That's good.
Now I get it.
Anything else on seven? All right. It's later than I thought. So let's move to public comment. Ned, Maggie, Josh, if you could please sit back.
You.
I am going to reread how we're handling this for the rules.
Just a quick one. Some of the stuff is in here. Like it says spaces 25 through 34 are available for tracking of the equipment now and using. Tell us that's where they're gonna buy their equipment.
And that's what I was saying with the matrix. We need to go back through and pull some of these things that are in different pieces, places together again. So we're gonna move to recognizing the public for their testimony on what we've talked about tonight. Again, the rules are wait to be recognized by me before speaking. Come to the table, give your name and address, speak into the microphone so the cameras can pick you up. When you are done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to me and I will make sure that we get an answer. So Ned, please don't leave. Speakers may not cross, because you may be required to answer questions, so.
I was just gonna walk the down hall.
That's fine. I just don't want you to leave permanently. Speakers may not cross-examine applicant, board members, or other speakers. Again, I will get the answers for you or we will note that it's something that needs to be answered. We're going to be, after we hear from the public, we're going to move to identifying the outstanding items for the next meeting. And then obviously, this will be continued to May 28th, at which we hope we get some of the answers back and go forward. So, Mr. Joe Henning, please, you are up first.
I think, my name is Phil Joe Henning. I live at 23 Parkway Drive. I think a lot of my concerns that were expressed in my letter from yesterday have been addressed by the changes that you've made. But nevertheless, I'd like to quickly go through them because there are a few things that haven't been addressed. I am writing to express my outrage at the discussion at the end of the planning board meeting on 23 April. I find the frustration of the applicants and even the planning board over the duration of the hearings for the special permit for Thayer Nursery to be nothing less than ludicrous. The application that was originally presented was not adequate. That is clear from the number of changes that have subsequently occurred. What do I mean? I mean that the application must conform to the requirements of the bylaw amendment that was passed by town meeting in May of 2014. I believe that it was the responsibility of the planning director to vet the application against the requirements of the bylaw amendment prior to the public hearings. Based on the letter presented by my attorney at the first meeting of the public hearings, that was not done. Furthermore, the revisions are not even tracked nor marked so that we can understand which revision is currently before the board. When a vote occurs, how will we know which version is before the board? And how will we know if the board has thoroughly reviewed the correct version? My attorney, Matthew Dunn, asked whether the applicant even qualified under the requirements of the bylaw amendment. John Flynn, the town attorney, did not respond in his letter to that question. The zoning board of appeals in its hearing on 30 April also did not vote on the question, though it was presented to them by way of a letter from Matthew Dunn. The application is still not complete and the most basic questions remain unanswered. The board started the public hearings nevertheless. As we sit here at these public hearings in mid-May, still reviewing a constantly changing application that was originally presented in October of 2014, I wonder when the applicants, the planning director, and the planning board will present a complete document from a thoroughly vetted applicant. It is not the neighbors who are delaying the hearings. It is the incredibly poor quality of the application and the vetting process. My primary concerns as an abutter continue to be, one, is the applicant qualified under the requirements of the bylaw amendment? Where is the documentation that proves they are qualified? Two, where is the glossary in the application where terms that are not new or not commonly used are defined? I'm not sure at this moment if all will agree regarding what a grow-out area or a land care yard means. Three, where is the 2012 baseline? Where is the detail that will enable the town and perhaps a judge to verify the baseline? What measure will be used? Will it be revenue by line of business? Will the total tie to Thayer's 2012 tax return? The baseline has to be independently verifiable and it must be reasonably enforceable. Four, when will the utility map be updated to show septic, the water well, and the gas line? National Grid has said that there is gas service on the property. Is the septic system adequate for the number of employees on site? Are the bathroom facilities adequate? The members of the board may recall that the building inspector included his concern over septic in his letter to the board. When will we have the opportunity to review the drainage plan? The board may recall that the trench along the southern boundary of the nursery was supposed to drain into a cistern. That cistern has not, has yet to be installed and my property continues to flood with every rainstorm. Inspection of the trench today and comparison of the trench to the nursery plan that was presented to the board will show that the eastern terminus of the trench is well beyond the terminus shown on the plan. That inconsistency exacerbates the flooding problem that I constantly experience. When will abutters finally see the protections that the town meeting intended to provide to abutting neighbors? Will offending activities be more centrally located on the property so that the applicants bear more of the burden as opposed to the abutting neighbors? Can firewood distribution be moved off-site? Can more of the offending activities be distributed to other locations such as 217 and 237 Hillside? Currently, the plan shows all of the activities that create vibration, noise, dust, and odors along the eastern and southern property lines of lots N 12, 1B, and 1C, where neighbors, rather than the applicants, suffer most. In consideration of the abutters, I urge the board to reject the current application and to send it back to the applicants with specific recommendations. I also urge the board to immediately make a determination through town council regarding whether the current applicant operated a nursery in 2012 and had a special permit to do so. Writing the application in a public meeting is entirely too time-consuming and it is not appropriate. I think it will be best for all if we can look at one finished application that complies in every respect to the bylaw amendment and gives the abutters meaningful relief while enabling the nursery to function efficiently. I think a lot of, you know, a few of the items have been addressed. But I still have concerns about where is, what is the version number of the current application that we're looking at? Is it numbered? Where is it? Like, is it the one upstairs? Is it, you know, which one am I looking at? Does anyone know? Like, should there be version numbers? Should the version numbers change when the, when the application changes? How will I know? I guess the other thing that I quickly like to mention is a, an email from you, Cole, to the board. And what I think it shows is the unfairness that certain abutters suffer and other abutters don't need to worry about. And you says, "Dear Alex and Bill, this email summarizes our perspective on the site plan for Thayer Nursery. Please distribute this to the planning board for its consideration." One, we understand that the site plan does not envision any changes in how Thayer uses the quadrant adjacent to our property versus how it was operated previously. We support this outcome. So as long as the, the special permit doesn't affect them, they're fully in support. We have discussed with Josh and Maggie that Thayer will plant two rows of Norwegian spruce trees along the border of our property line, providing visual coverage from the corner of our property to approximately two-thirds the way down, down toward Hillside Street. This is satisfactory to us in terms of creating visual coverage. Three, we understand that according to the site plan, under consideration by the planning board, the bulk materials will be stored at a central location near the wood barn. We support this outcome. The key concern of ours was odors from those materials, which we have experienced in the past. As long as it's beside Pam's house, it's fine. But next to his house, it's not fine. We understand that Thayer is planning to have some type of shields on its spotlights used at Christmas time, which would be helpful for us since we do not have a direct sightline to one of the spotlights, since we do have a direct sightline. We understand that Thayer will have a new water drainage system as part of the plan, which we also support. So, you know, one of the things that Josh mentioned while he was talking about moving some of these activities to 217 Hillside Street was that he has certain agreements with some of the neighbors. What? You know, what about us? So because he has agreements with some of the neighbors on Harland Street and because, you know, certain commitments have made, been made to you, Cole, it's okay if Pam, John and I, and Chris and Tina continue to suffer all of the consequences. That is wrong. I think if, if the board cannot find a way to treat us all equally, then it must reject this application. There is no reason why we need to be victimized by this. Robert Mussey was at the meeting when Pam and I presented the alternate plan. And Robert Mussey immediately got up and said, "Oh, it can't be near my house." Everybody who supports the nursery and the bylaw amendment, they all support it because they know that we take the brunt of all this activity. And that can't continue. That cannot continue. So in, in the interest of fairness, this all has to be spread around or the special permit needs to be denied. Because what is happening here with this plan is victimizing Pam Lepore tremendously, but she can speak for herself. And it's victimizing John and I, and that's not right. So I guess there are a couple of things that Josh brought up that I did not agree with. One of them was, he mentions the problems of trucks turning into 217 Hillside Street. I guess there are problems with the trucks turning into Forest Street. So are the problems at Hillside Street more serious than the problems at Forest Street? I don't know. Somebody has to look at that. It certainly can't be that we're going to victimize the neighbors on Forest Street and the people on Hillside Street get a free ride. Additionally, he mentioned that, I thought the idea that all of the plant material could be positioned, let's say during the day, was an excellent idea, but it was instantly poo-pooed. And I think that was wrong. Because if you look at the lot at the corner of Forest and Hillside Street, you will notice that there is no mulching of that plant material. That plant material is standing in dirt balls or it's standing in containers or it's standing in burlap. And all of it is above ground and none of it is mulched. So I think that there's a little bit of. So I think that there's a little bit of, I don't know, inconsistency in what I see and what I hear. And I know that that, that there is no mulch. And there hasn't been all winter. There hasn't been a shred of mulch. I hear about mulch being used in the landscaping activity, but I don't see any mulch. So I think that, you know, that, that would have to be, let's say, verified. And, and just to close, I think it's very important for the board to go back to Mr. Flynn and ask him if these applicants qualify. Because, you know, that's key. There's no sense in talking about fencing if they don't even qualify at all. And in my opinion, Thayer Nursery Corporation was running the nursery in 2012 and it did not have a special permit. Regardless of what the owners had, it, it's a separate individual. Thayer Nursery Corporation is a separate individual and it did not have a special permit and could not have a special permit. I think we need to get clarification on that because John Flynn didn't give it and John Leonard didn't give it on the 30th of April. It was presented to him and he did not opine on it. We need an answer to that before we can make decisions about the rest of this.
Thank you very much for your comments. And just to let the public know, we received a copy of Mr. Joe Henning's letter earlier today. I think I got mine when I got back from the House, part of coming to this meeting. So we will be taking those comments on board as we go forward. Does anybody else wish to speak to what we have been discussing tonight? No? Yes, come forward, please.
My name's Pamela Pori, 44 Forest Street. I think the fencing issue, they're still saying that it's 15 feet back from my property line, but I thought it was actually further. They had mentioned extending it a little more, but there was no mention of that tonight.
We'll need that clarified from the memo that they're going to present at the next meeting, so please go ahead.
I just want to agree with everything Phil Joe Henning just said. I think you're aware of my opposition to the location of the landcare yard. I think it's just totally unacceptable to use my property as a buffer to this commercial industrial operation. And I just want to thank Alex for acknowledging the noise that we're experiencing now because I was on my deck Mother's Day and 11 o'clock, the Bobcat started and ruined my brunch. And Tuesday night, they were still running at 7:00 at night. And it's summer, it's finally beautiful out, and I will never get these days back. I'll never get that Mother's Day back. And there've been other Mother's Days that have been ruined with Bobcats as well. And I'd also, again, my question is, what are we basing the 2012 cap on? I'm confused about that. And I'm worried, we're talking about the sound mitigation, I'm worried about what happens if it is ineffective, if these fences don't work. And I know discussion, the review was mentioned for a year. I would really like a six-month review with this concern. And again, just the location of this landcare yard, it just, I agree with everything Phil said.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. One question I forgot to answer of, and I'll recognize you in just a moment, Mr. Joe Henning and everybody else, just so you know, the application we're working with is the one that came in this white binder. Anything else will be presented to us, as I've said, in a supplementary memo, not a revision of the tax. So this is what we're working from, just so you know.
April 5th.
No, the April 5th was supplementary information. What we're going through is the white binder. I know you've put the April 5th information in here. We'll talk about how we deal with that. But that's considered to be supplementary information. This is the application. So, just a second ahead, Mr. Rowe ahead of you. Mr. Rowe, please.
Thank you. John Rowe, 23 Parkwood Drive. I have a couple of, one thing I wanted to talk about is I believe that this board has now heard from all of the direct abutters of Thayer Nursery. We've heard from, a joint letter was sent to this board from Tina and Chris Stevens, Phil and Pam and me outlining what we hope to get out of this if a special permit is granted. And you've heard from the Coles, you've heard from Stephen Davis, you've heard from the neighbor next to Stephen Davis, I forget his name, Carol Stocker's husband. And one thing that we have here, and I think the board has to recognize this, is that we are all, every single one of the abutters is in agreement on one thing. And that thing is that we want the industrial and offensive piece of this operation to be moved away from all of us. And, and you have that in writing and people have spoken in these public meetings, there's not one single direct abutter that is in favor of having the high-impact industrial nature of this landscape wood distribution business close to them. And as Phil pointed out, it's closer to the abutters than it is the applicants. And I think what this shows is, I don't know how this board can justify issuing a permit for this activity when it's difficult to say that it is in harmony with the residential character of the neighborhood, when every one of the abutters says it's not. And I think if you look at Statute 48, Chapter 9, it's clear that the zoning bylaw or this special permit must be in harmony with the, with the zoning of the area. And, and I think that what we've seen here, all of the public opinion or, or all of the opinion of the abutters is uniform. We are all together on this. There's not one single person ascending to the fact that they don't want the high-impact industrial nature of this next to them. And we are hoping that if a permit is issued, well, we don't believe that you can prove that it's in harmony with the, the zoning of Residence A or Residence Double A, but if it is issued, we urge you to move this high-impact stuff off of the site, the wood especially, and all of the landcare and truck traffic to behind 217 Hillside Streets. And if there has to be an accommodation made so that trucks can get into that driveway, then perhaps an accommodation should be made to do that. The people that abut that property have not spoken out in any of these public hearings. They've all been notified and not one of the abutters down there has offered any disagreement with issuing the special permit. So, these are people that support the special permit. It makes the most sense to put it there, not near the people that oppose the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Hi. Tina Stevens, 39 Parkwood Drive, direct abutter. I just want to follow up. Last week's meeting, I said that I'd bring the actual sample of the Acoustablock fence.
Yes, you did.
So, it's here. And this is what it looks like. So it's basically these grommet holes.
Okay.
There's plastic ties that go through that and get adhered to the fence.
Can you pass it, Tim, actually?
Sure.
Or actually, Mike, probably easier. I thought you were writing.
And I followed up with the company and also, they told me they were actually working up a clause for Waymouth Club.
Okay.
Because Waymouth Club is actually expanding and there were three or four abutters that were concerned about the noise. And the architect recommended Acoustablock and also the town of Waymouth, I guess, also proved this already. It's already been used in the town. So it's been used with success. And one of the abutters of Waymouth Club where they're expanding is a contractor and this is something that he recommended as well.
Can we keep this on our files, please?
That is yours.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing that.
So that was one thing. And the other thing I wanted is, my husband followed up with Bill Clark, but I noticed he's not here on the Bobcat.
He was briefly. He's, there's a selectmen's meeting upstairs, so he's been moving back and forth.
So as far as the Bobcat, he looked into it. And I know that, I think, Tim, you have the copies of the chain as far as the noise. That's our, that's 80% for us. And our thing is noise. So, but putting things in place that, I think it's great, you know, listening to you guys get into the, you know, nitty-gritty details of the special permit is wonderful, but as an abutter, I'm listening to this saying, this isn't enforceable. Like, I'm not going over when a truck, like when I was awakened, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I'm not going over my PJs. You know, and what is, what is allowed and what isn't allowed. So, I think when you look at the special permit as a whole, think of actually living next to it and, you know, what would be enforceable? You know, what, I'd say the permanent things that you could put in place, like a fence with, you know, sound barrier, hours of operation as far as, you know, when the Bobcats can run. Quieter Bobcats would be, I really feel, that's my personal, is 80% of it. It's the Bobcat noise. Because I, you know, no one wants to police their neighbors. I mean, I don't think anybody at this table is interested and I know none of us are. So, I think that's the biggest thing for me.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your comments. Does anybody else wish to speak? So, seeing nobody else, I'm going to, Ned, if you'll come forward for a couple of reasons. One, I want to give you the opportunity to address anything you may want to, you may not want to. But two, I want to talk about the steps for next week's meeting. So if you wish to address any concerns, that's fine. If not, let's move into the, the next steps.
No, I don't have any comment.
Okay. All right. Well, in that case, I think you've heard from us and from the people who spoke what our concerns are and what we've talked about tonight. Some of these actually do flow through to other parts of the special permit. So I'm hoping what we get from you at the next meeting would be a memorandum addressing some of these issues. Again, keeping in mind how the board would be able to enforce any of these. So, we've talked about timelines, we've talked about specific quantities. We would like to hear your opinion on those. We may end up with our own opinion on those going forward, but please be prepared to address all of those items, again, in a memorandum form. Tim, you've got a list, fairly complete list of what we've been talking about.
Sure.
Okay. I've got a list as well. I think we've probably taken lists. So if, if those of us who have written down lists can get their, what they've got to Tim, make sure it's complete and then forward it over to Ned to make sure that we understand what is an outstanding item. Tim and I will look at the matrix and revise it down so we can get things into a little bit more comprehensive categories and move forward. I'm hoping this is addressing some of the concerns that were raised about the process. The other critical thing, I think you, you touched on it when your initial presentation, is those stormwater discussions because that will affect the timing if we can finish this up. Other than that, if the board doesn't have anything else, I think we are continued to six, no.
Just one quick question.
Yes, one quick question. Continue it.
I just, well, before we move on, I went through and it looks like we have 21 more paragraph sections to go through and within that 10 sub-paragraphs. So I just wanted to just test the boards, you know, we're suggesting the 28th is our hopeful timeline, so we have three other things that night.
I think the 28th is likely to change because of the stormwater. You said it would take another couple of weeks before dates could be set for the engineers. Is that correct? I believe that's what you said this morning. If so, that bumps us right up against the 28th. I don't see that we can logically finish. The other thing is, some of those paragraphs, the way they're laid out, are repetitive.
I did see that.
Yeah. And I think we're going to be able to consolidate a lot of them. Tim has, by the way, I sort of sprung this on Tim last week, saying, "Look, we really need to do this." And we had town meeting in between and he's had a couple of other things. So he has done yeoman's work in putting together what he has. I think it's critical that we make sure that we know zoning, proposals, abutters, Joe Prandax requests, all in one piece so we can see it. But I think we'll be able to consolidate some of that to make it a little bit easier for all of us to follow, so.
I do want to second your compliment to Tim and thank him. I think, you know, I requested this and it's a huge step in figuring out where we are. So thank you, Tim, and great job.
Yeah, well done. Anything else? Not, I believe we are continued to 7:00 PM on May 28th.
We'll move.
Second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Sure.
Okay, great. So let me just, great. Excellent.
Seven.
Seven o'clock, yeah. So that gives us 6:45 for Windmere, 7 for Thayer, 7:30 for 333 Brush Hill. I think 333 Brush Hill may get delayed a little bit because it's going to take us more than half an hour on that.
Exactly.
Well, that's also probably true. You'll keep us informed or keep the planning department informed of timelines on that. I think we have ticked off everything else that was on our list, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless anybody else has any additional business. Second? All in favor? Great. Thank you very much. See you on the 28th.